You find out from her. And if you think it's appropriate for them to... Good evening. Welcome, everyone. And we're going to open the planning board meeting for, what is this? Wednesday, August 20th. Not the 19th, the 20th. And so for those in the audience and those on, watching on television, my name is John Weiss. I'm the Chair of the Board.
Catherine Jepson, Chair.
George Morris.
I'm John O'Connell, member.
Martha Taylor, Town Planner.
Go down to Martha.
Oh, yeah. And so we have a number of appearances this evening. But actually, before we get into those, we do have our meeting minutes from last time. And actually, I had a, does anyone else have any comments on the, on the? These are all typos, I think, that I've noticed.
I was good with it. I missed the typos entirely.
I, where is it? Excuse me. When it, we opened, is it meeting minutes of July 16th? The meeting minutes of June 14th, right?
We did the...
So...
Oh, right.
Oh.
Right, right, right. You're right. You're right. Yeah, it's my, it's my mistake. It's June 14th.
Am I right? No, wait a minute. What I was sent... Oh, I know. Here it is. In the meeting minutes, which we approved last month on July 16th.
Right.
We approved the June 14th meeting minutes.
You're absolutely right.
All right. And then, secondly, in the master plan update, you and I reported not that we attended, but that we would attend a meeting with Marshall Jesperson and Frank Remley.
Okay.
And those are just... I think we can make those here, those adjustments, okay?
Yeah, just vote as amended.
So, George, do you have any comments?
I don't, no.
Okay. So, could I have a motion, then, to accept the minutes as amended by those two items that I just talked?
I can't vote on this, so just...
No, you weren't here.
Yep.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that passes. Thank you. So, the first appearance we have this evening is Steve Long of Borrego Solar to talk about an informal discussion on the application of the ground mounted solar PV installations at 8 Middle Road and 136 Main Street. Important for both those in the audience and those on television to know that the Planning Board is advisory to the Board of Selectmen on this. We are not a decision maker. The decision maker is the Board of Selectmen, okay? But they have forwarded to us for our opinion, and that's the purpose of this presentation this evening. So, Steve, with that, we'd appreciate you letting us know what's going on.
Okay. My name is Steve Long from Borrego Solar, and we have two projects, as you said. I'll do the first one, which is at 8 Middle Road. And that, this is the site here. This is Route 1. Middle Road is here, and this is High Field Road. The system, it's three separate arrays, set on two, one lot, which is divided. It used to be one lot, and then the easement, the utility easement went through, and it cut it into two lots. Same owner. And there'll be three arrays, like I said. The first array will be accessed off Route 1, driveway here. It'll be divided between two areas here. The second array will be accessed off Middle Road. The third array will be accessed off High Field Road, and then via the easement, and then access road here. This total system size is 2.1, 2.4 megawatts, and that, the whole system will be approximately 7,700 solar modules. They'll be mounted on racks.
Excuse me, that's all three?
All three. The total is that, yep. The area that they'll, within the fenced area where the modules will be, total is approximately 10 acres.
Okay.
These modules will be mounted on racks. Each rack will have 30 modules. They'll be five modules high by six modules across. They'll be mounted at a 20-degree angle. They're fixed mounted. They don't move. The leading edge or the bottom edge will be approximately 30 inches above the ground, and the highest point will be approximately 10 feet above the ground. This property is located in the Business Light Industrial Zone. It's also within the Water Supply Protection Overlay District, the Adult Entertainment Overlay, the Wireless Communications Service Overlay, and the Flood Hazard Overlay District. There's a portion, while we're in the process of putting this, sending the applications in, the flood maps changed in this area, and they went from 8 to 10. The flood elevation is 10 in this area, and the flood line actually goes adjacent to where the wetland line is along this portion, and it actually cuts in through the middle of the site here. So, the portion of this will be in the flood zone. And that has been discussed with Conservation Commission, and they, they looked at that.
Just that back.
Just this portion here. Yep.
Does the property owner have history of flooding in the area that he's told you?
He hasn't said anything to me. No.
I'm not aware of it. Little river floods kind of regularly.
Yeah, little rivers here.
Yeah.
The center of it's pretty far back, and it's flat. This is a flat field. This is a flat area through here.
I've never run into any serious flooding in this, anywhere on this project.
We were before the Board of Selectmen, like you said, for a special permit for this site. We actually went to Concom last night, and they approved our notice of intent for this site. So, they've approved that. They've seen the stormwater analysis. That was submitted also. As part of that, we've gone to the Fire Department, and they've looked at all the access for the site, and they're fine with that. We've gone to the Police Department, and they're all set with this project. They have no comment. And that's about it for an overview of this site. I have a picture of what the panels will look like, just as an idea.
And so, the top height here is 12 feet? I think you said it.
It'd be about 10 feet, yeah. This one, the, the plan I showed you there, it shows it, the modules, four feet, four of them high. Ours are going to be five, but the angle is going to be 20. It's going to be a little flatter than what this shows. So, the lowest edge will be about 30 inches or two and a half feet, and the top will be approximately 10.
And your lease with the owner is for how long?
20 years.
20 years.
Yeah.
And you're aware of the decommissioning requirements in the, in the special permit?
Yep.
Open up for questions from the Board first, and then to the community. George, do you have any?
No. The only thing is, are these panels reflective at all?
Nope. They actually absorb.
Yeah, that's what I thought, no.
Yep.
But I have nothing more. Kathleen?
You mentioned that you have already spoken with the police and the fire.
Yep, yep.
Normally, when we do planning board types of middles, we also send it to the Highway Department. I was just curious, was that on the list of things to do, or no?
It was not on the list of things to do.
All right.
John?
I had a number of odds and ends of things, none of which are earth-shattering, that have nothing to do with the conservation stuff that we've dealt with before. Surety, liability, insurance.
Yep.
I'm sure you've worked that out with somebody.
Yep.
If not us. The O and M plan, there is sort of an O and M plan there now, and you're going to, you're going to be doing some more work on that in conjunction with Doug's request for more detail in...
As far as the construction part of it, yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Which is not really operation, but it's...
How it's going to get built.
Yeah.
Yep.
System installer, I don't think was nailed, nailed down, or is that you?
That's Borrego, yep.
Okay. I don't think we have any shop drawings of anything. Not that I consider that a big deal at this stage. It is there in the...
We submitted some, some cut sheets for...
Did you submit cut sheets?
Yeah, they, they should have been in there, in the, in the application.
I apologize. What I've reviewed, and that's all from the Concom office, maybe missed the...
It was not in the Concom application. It was in the special permit application. Yep.
The, I couldn't find any one or three-line electrical diagrams again.
That's in, that's in there, too.
That's in the, that's in there.
That's in special, yep. The special permit.
And, you know, it basically says there shall be no significant tree cutting, but we have beat that, that particular issue totally to death. So, I mean, what are you going to do? It's...
Yeah.
Well, on that, what, what, what amount of, of trees beyond six-inch caliber will be cut?
I can't give you the quantity, the exact number, but I know on this site, it's approximately 10 acres of trees will be removed.
So, 10 acres of trees will be removed, but you're only winding up with 10 acres of arrays?
Right, but there's some portions outside of the fence line that will be removed also just because of shading.
That just seems odd, only, only because when we walked the site.
Right, right.
The, the, the far northwest side is almost completely clear.
This actually extends into the tree lines on here.
It just...
I think that, what's confusing, I think if he highlighted, which I understand why you might not want to, but if he highlighted the existing vegetation...
Existing tree line, yeah.
It would have shown you exactly why, because that was one of the things I looked at when we did the walk-through.
Yeah. It just seems that the numbers don't add, but, I mean, and only because one of the criteria we have is that, to the extent possible, that should eliminate the smallest amount of trees possible. I mean, that's one of our criteria.
We're doing pretty minimal, and we're staying, we're leaving a 25-foot buffer along the wetlands.
It might be helpful if you just trace with your finger, or even if, just Martha, do you have...
Where the existing tree line is. Yeah, it shows on this plan.
That's going to, that's going to basically answer his question.
It's not less of a big deal on this project than it is on the Byfield one.
Yeah.
I know.
And when we walked out into the field, you might have thought that the system was going on that big open part, but that's actually being left open as sort of a backyard to this house.
Right. So, am I, am I correct that that backyard is, is owned by the son of the larger property owner? Am I wrong on that?
It's this, the father owns the big property, the son owns the house.
Right.
And they want to leave that as sort of his continuing of the backyard.
And so, has he raised any concerns about having some kind of a visual buffer, or is he okay with having nothing?
Nope, he's okay with the way it is. I think he has some existing trees there that will buffer his view from where he looks out from his house.
And the other criteria that we have, did you do the, the installation, excuse me, in Salisbury, along the railroad line?
Boy, I don't think so.
It's, what's the name of that road that goes out?
Rabbit Road.
Rabbit Road.
That doesn't sound right to me. I, I haven't been with Borrego that long.
Anyway, anyway.
So, I'm not sure. That one doesn't ring a bell, though.
The other criteria that we have is, is that the fence be clad with a, a black plastic, and not a, not a metal fence.
Galvanized chain-link fence to have black...
And that's okay?
Yeah, apparently. I mean, that's, if that's what's required, that's what we'd do.
That's what's required, right.
Yep.
So, have you worked out with the town your revenue estimates for what this property will generate?
I think Joe from our office is working with the assessor on that.
Okay.
I know they've talked quite a bit about it.
I mean, I, I think it's one of those things that I would like to see pinned down before any approvals are given. That's just my, my take on things.
Yeah.
I'd like to think that the Selectmen are going to do exactly that, as part and parcel of...
I think that's why the assessors were there at the walk-through, because Michelle's in charge of that town.
Just one of those things.
There's been some heavy discussions.
If we reinforce it.
There's been a lot of discussion back and forth.
You're right, though. Can I get back to my question, just because it wasn't really answered? Martha, who handles, if they're going to be in, putting in new roads for access, access roads, who handles the stormwater component of that, so there's not runoff coming off into Middle Road or onto Route 1? Because he said that the Highway Department did not look at this, and I was just curious, is someone at least looking at that? I don't expect a problem, but someone should at least be overseeing it.
Concom has been asking about the stormwater.
It's Concom's responsibility, as far as approval goes, to the best of my knowledge.
For stormwater for the road?
Stormwater for the project.
Sure.
Okay.
For the project.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
That's your job.
The, yeah, the, the Soil Conservation Service regs and so forth are counterintuitive. You would think you chop down a bunch of trees and you plant grass instead, that you're going to increase the runoff significantly. That is not the case, you know? And I can't find anything anywhere in the National Resources Conservation Service that explains how come that is, but that is the way it is, and it's been that way since the 40s and 50s, and it has been used successfully all these years. I can only assume that that is somehow the case.
We're not, we're not talking about grass or trees. We're talking about putting in dirt roads that don't exist right now, that have access to Route 1.
Excuse me.
Right, well, I think they all tie together.
Are they dirt roads?
They're gravel roads, so they, and they're only, the, this is, this is 14 feet wide, this is 12 feet wide. They're gravel impervious, they're pervious, sorry.
Right.
Pervious roads. They're not totally impervious, so you're not going to get much runoff.
And the thing is, is I'm not saying that, I'm just saying someone should be looking at this. I want to know who's looking at it to make sure that, if the Comcom's looked at it, that's fine, but I just want to make sure someone's looked at it and said, yes, it's fine.
The point I was trying to make was that because of the somewhat small decrease in the runoff as a result of going from the fairwoods to the pasture, the, the meadowland, that made up for the slight increase that you're getting from gravel roads. So, you're ending up with a net, a net zero, essentially a net zero increase in runoff, as near as I can tell.
And I'll say also that there's an existing access here. I mean, there's a dirt drive here already. This, we're going to come off an existing drive here that we walked up when we went to the site, and this is an existing access also.
Right.
Well, I got a certain amount of flack because of the conclusions that Steve reached, and I did my absolute best to prove him wrong, and I failed. So, what can I say?
My only concern is, is that when we go through these processes, we've only been through one before, so it's kind of a learning curve, things that we, we know. We always expect everybody, the applicants, to be thinking in the best interest of the town, too, but that's not always the case, so that's my concern.
All right. Any other Board member have a question? Anyone from the audience have a question on this particular project? Okay, again, this is under advisement, and we will, we will discuss the matter and as a Board, and probably forward a recommendation to the Selectmen. They meet on Tuesday, so we'll have to work on that in the next few days to get some kind of recommendation, okay?
And you'll send a copy of me?
Yep.
Okay, awesome.
Do you want to go on to the next one?
Sure. Okay, the next one is on property owned by the Yesair family. There's actually four parcels involved with this project, and that totaling 93 acres. There's a parcel here owned by Ruth Yesair. This parcel's owned by KV. This parcel here, which is a large parcel, is owned by Ruth, and this back parcel is owned by Ruth also. So, the project will extend on those four parcels totaling 93 acres. This system will generate 2.7 megawatts.
Give me just a second. I have a feeling that these folks have an interest in this. Could you turn that around and face the audience? Good.
This system will generate 2.7 megawatts of electricity. It's a slightly larger system. The system will be accessed from Main Street, off an existing drive. This is Ruth, the driveway to Ruth Yesair's house. We'll have a 12-foot-wide gravel access drive that follows an existing road that accesses these, they have fields back here that they plant crops on, and will follow the existing cart path through the woods here, out to where the array's going to be. This array is all in one, one spot. It's going to occupy, within the fenced area, 11 acres. This system will also be the same racking and modules. This project will have approximately 9,000 modules on the same racking, which will be five high by six across, so each rack has 30 modules on it. This project is in agricultural residential zone. The connection to the utility, electric utility, will occur here on the easement that is directly adjacent to Route 95. Will come via underground lines to poles here, and will go over the wetlands through a short distance in the woods, and then poles here to the existing easement there, and connect in to this power line that goes across 95.
Would you go over that again? So, you're underground...
Underground to here.
And then overground.
And then overground to get over the wetlands here.
And then, and then overground to get to the existing system?
Yep.
And what's adjacent to the existing system at that point in time?
Right here.
Yeah, is there, that's just, you're not showing any homes or any uses?
The wet area here, the homes are pretty far. They're down here, pretty far.
Okay.
There's, there's the easement, there's sort of a wetland on this side, and then the houses are after that. I don't know what the exact distance is.
Can you point out for the audience where Courtney Drive is, please?
Courtney Drive is right here. This is Main Street. The system will be approximately 130 to 150 feet off the, this property line, and another, it's probably 250 feet, to Courtney Drive. This project is also going to the Board of Selectmen and has gone to the Conservation Commission, and they continued that hearing until September 6th, where we will be...
Fourth, I think.
The fourth? I'm sorry, the fourth.
It's the fourth.
At 6:00. That's right. And we had some items that they needed clarity on, and we'll be submitting more information to them. This project has gone to the Police Department. They had no issues. The Fire Department had no issues either with the project. There was a stormwater analysis done for this site also.
I'm sorry, the police, the fire, and who was the third? Did you say a third?
I didn't say a third.
I'm sorry.
Nope. There was stormwater analysis done for this one also, and that was reviewed by the Conservation Commission also, as part of that application. That's pretty much an overview of this site. I'd be happy to answer, answer questions.
Steve, on the plan, you have 93 acres out there. How much are you leasing? Is it about 12 acres or so?
Inside the fence is 11.
11, okay. Good, thank you.
Kathleen? John, do you want to maybe give us an idea of what the Concom concerns were last night?
The basic concern is lack of detail. You agree with that, Steve? Is that, you consider that your charge to, to get more detail? Bridge is an example that gives Doug Hartburn particularly. We need to know exactly where it is relative to the wetland, and we need to know how it can be built, how can you truck it in, get a crane to take it off the truck, and prepare a foundation soil for it.
Right.
Dump it in the ground without making a god-awful mess, and that, we know that it can be done, but we don't know what you're planning on doing. And hence, since we don't know what you're planning on doing, we can't be enforcing the agreement, because there isn't one, okay?
Right.
So, we need to have an agreement on what you're going to do, and we got to say, yeah, that looks sensible to us, and then we will, Doug will have both eyes on you when you're doing it. Hopefully, everything will come out in the wash.
Right.
So, that, that is the biggie.
So, Martha, do you have any comments on this?
No.
That example I used was probably the biggest, but the, the others are all of the same nature.
Adding additional detail and just describing what we're doing a little better.
Yep.
And so, I have the same comment relative to our criteria that the Selectmen should be using in order to approve this project, and that is that there's an extraordinary amount of trees that are going to be cut on this one. And again, our criteria says there should be little to none, and then what's not, and what is cut should be replaced. It appears that this is a very difficult property to develop for other uses in terms of getting a cul-de-sac of, it looks like 5,000 feet or something like that in there, which would probably not be approved.
Yeah, there's a narrow access to the wetlands and that.
And, and, and so we understand that, but at the same time, it seems to me that since you are asking for a substantial variance, if you will, it's not an official zoning variance, but a variance from the criteria that we'd be using, that you ought to be prepared to address the concerns of the Courtney Road people to the fullest extent possible, in terms of figuring out what is the best possible way to shield this property, your property, and your use from their rear yards, and that it would not be done with, you know, first, second growth, abrevieties, but with very mature evergreens. And I think that's an even trade for what you've asked us to, the town, to give up here, and it's not a significant number of individuals, but I think there's one, two, I'm counting four, who are potentially...
Yep.
And I'm not sure when you find that out. Maybe you find that out in, you know, on December 15th, you know, when all the leaves are off the trees, and you go back up there and take another look. But I think that a, a significant planting to screen it makes a significant impact from our point of view. So, with, with that, are there audience members here who would like to address this and have a discussion about it? Yes. And then, you, would you, I'll tell you what, you can, if you would just go up and grab that mic and turn it around, and then you can...
You can also take it right off, if you're more comfortable.
Yeah, okay, and just let it...
Yeah, it has to be held closer than he was standing.
Right, and then let us know your name and address, okay?
My name is Alicia Greco. I live at 3 Courtney Drive, and that would be this property right here.
Okay.
Now, the issues that we have as a community, this house should be under agreement any day now, and they may be adding on to us as well, but as of right now, it's just these three properties. A couple of issues, and I know this isn't really a form for that, so I'm going to be really quick and succinct to just give you things to think about. I don't want answers tonight. The stormwater, we hired an environmental consultant, Tracy Peter, Peter Environmental, to look at the, at their notice of intent, and she did, and she had a couple of questions, and they were presented to the Conservation Commission last, last night, but I'm not sure, and I haven't honestly had a chance to talk to Doug yet. I don't know what his intent is, but I know there's the, the stormwater issues. She contracted with another, and I have the thing with me tonight. She contracted with another professional engineer out of Haverhill who looked at these calculations and didn't agree with them.
What type of calculations?
Stormwater runoff.
The stormwater calculation?
Yeah, let me, I'll give that to you right now.
If I could trace Phil Christiansen's letter, he basically said that the arrays constitute an impervious surface. he basically said that the arrays constitute an impervious surface, and hence, the assumption of a meadow is incorrect. The DEP established a position probably close to a year ago that arrays do not constitute a, an impervious surface. So I totally disagree with Phil. A number of the points that Phil made in his letter for Tracy, I do agree with. I think the Commission in general agrees with them. That particular one, I, I can't buy for the life of me.
The stormwater, that's, like, I have, it's out of my realm. I don't know anything about geology or anything like, like that. That's why we went, we went to her. But she told me, she's, her, her position, and I'd love you to listen to this. Steve? Yes, okay. "We believe the stormwater calculations are incorrect because the engineering firm that looked at those calculations said that the, they agree with Peter Environmental that the stormwater calculations need to be revised and provide mitigation and/or detention. The guidelines they're using are a state guidebook for putting solar arrays on land, on landfills. This development is not on a closed landfill and does not have a pre-existing stormwater system. All closed landfills already have a stormwater system in place. This development is on undeveloped land, and the two situations are totally different." That was her point to that. And this may be fixed. I'm not saying it's, you know, maybe, I don't know. And the other thing which may you have spoke to about, while the other conditions that Doug said, this might be part of that. So if I'm redundant, I do apologize. But she said that there is very little post-development grading on the plan, and they are going to be working in till and bedrock after removing the trees. What will the construction impacts be to that, to the, to the area? And the plan says that it's to grow grass on the till and the, and the rock material, but they don't show details on that. And maybe that's what you've already asked for.
I think we're, CONCOM's in agreement with. I, it, you know, I can't speak for the CONCOM on this, 'cause we didn't vote on it. My sense is the first four, we buy, the last three, we do not.
I just want you guys to be aware of it and to, and to follow up with it. That's, that's my only point tonight.
Well, I, let me inter, so, but you guys will be responding to this letter, am I right? The CONCOM officially?
We will be dealing with it. Exactly how we respond, I can't speak to.
Okay.
Obviously, we are paying attention to this. This is nothing we're ignoring.
Okay, that's good. So my other question, that's all I had to do with environmental stuff, but my other question is regards to zoning laws. Now, this is zoned residential-agricultural. And what they want to do is they want to put a commercial installation on here, which in effect is changing the use. So I need to understand how that's appropriate. You can do, put a change of use in zoning. And what happens 20 years down the road?
It's in our existing zoning now. It was voted on last year or the year before for the typical residential agricultural.
Is that the solar reply, the solar array bylaw?
Right.
Yeah. So that voted, that, that bylaw, I was reading on the by, I've been reading them up, up on these. And so my question is, if they were to develop this property and put a street in and put housing, they're going to develop 11 acres of land. I am going to go under the assumption that they're gonna build more than four homes on 11 acres of land. And if that's the case, then they would have to trigger that, that OSRD. And in that OSRD, one of the criteria, not the primary purposes, but the secondary purposes, is to protect the value of real property. And this is so new that there, I have looked, and I have looked, and I can't find any data on, from Massachusetts Realtors, on what the effect of property values on properties that have transferred surrounding these type of arrays. And the more I dig, the more I find that there's nothing, there's no data yet, 'cause it's so, it's so new. So I went outside the state, and I started looking outside the state, and my neighbor Jean looked into the states of California and the states of Arizona. And they have found significant reductions in property values surrounding it. And she's got the data on that, and I'm gonna present that to the special permitting, during special permitting hearing. So they're gonna get a-
Just to comment on California, and only 'cause I'm, I just moved here from California.
Okay.
And I'm aware of a number of the solar arrays that were put in. In California, you don't have a lot of trees, and you have a lot of open space. And so it's much easier for an array to be smack dab in front of somebody than it is here, which is substantially hidden. That's just an, that's just a comment. And so I wouldn't be at all surprised that if in California you did have a significant reduction in property value.
Okay. So where I don't have, where we don't have any data on home sales for surrounding arrays, what we do have data on is sales that have transferred, that are currently on the market in properties that have transferred that are around high-tension wires. And they're gonna be coming from here, I, I think you said that we're gonna go into the ground, and then they come up a little bit, right? Are there gonna be any high-tension wires over here? No, not at all.
They just go out the back of, I understand, from the panels to the highway?
It's not a high-tension, big line, it's, they're, but they're whole-mounted lines.
Okay. So that's the closest thing that I can find comparable to a power plant that generates energy is something that is high-tension wires, because there, there isn't, there isn't any. And again, I'm gonna be presenting that part of the, to the thing, but I wanted you guys to be aware of it.
To the Board of Selectmen.
Right. For the special permitting. So that's my question as far as the bylaws go. If, if they were to develop this and trigger that, trigger that OSRD, and they have to adhere to certain parts of that bylaw, why wouldn't they have to adhere to the protection of real property value the same as they would if they were gonna develop it with housing? I don't understand that.
I'm not sure if I understand your question. I mean, the intent of the OSRD is to allow a developer to intensify his development options by leaving a significant amount of the land in open space. So hypothetically, not this parcel, but another parcel, let's, let's say 20 acres. And instead of putting 20 single-family homes on the 20 acres, what the OSRD says, you can put 20 single-family homes on 10 acres, reduce the size of your lots, and then keep 10 acres in open space.
Like Caldwell Farm.
Like Caldwell Farm, if you're familiar with that at all.
Yeah.
And so that's really what it, what is-
What's the benefit of that?
The benefit of that is that you, the town usually gets a benefit, and the residents of that development get a benefit. They have increased amount of open space.
And all your utilities are condensed?
Right. It's less expensive for the developer to develop, and the open space benefits benefit the town and the immediate development. So those are the benefits that accrue from an OSRD.
Okay. So that's where my, my question lies, is if that OSRD has to protect the value of real, real property, why wouldn't this same development have to do the same, the same thing? And it might, I don't, I don't know that question. I mean, you may not even be able to answer that.
It can.
It can? Okay, great. Okay, so the, it's the only thing that I'm, the only, in closing, is when I purchased my property 17 years, years ago, never in my wildest dreams did I think there was gonna be an industrial power plant abutting me. I bought in residential-agricultural, as did everybody else on Courtney. We assumed that this would either be housing, which would probably increase the value of our, our, our homes, and, or, yep, or stay farm. Never did I think it would be a commercial endeavor abutting, abutting me.
That's true.
They also, the Borrego also has that other plan that you just saw earlier that sailed through. There's no issues with it, no abiders are complaining. It's, it's zoned in business-like industrial. It is sighted appropriately. This here is in a, in a zoned residential area, and it's like this all over the state. Millis has issues with it, Hollison has issues with it. Anytime they put these big things in, in a residential area, it's just not sighted appropriately. That's our feeling on Courtney, and I really hope you guys feel the same.
Thank you.
And that's it in closing. Thank you.
And Lisa, you know the background of this. This was a request for us to review this, to put it on residential agriculture.
Absolutely.
And it went to the-
Yeah.
Steve, what's the distance from the, that black line you've got to the nearest house?
From right, right here?
Yeah, well, yeah, whatever, right there.
Right, so about the fence line? That's about 150 feet, and then we've got about 200 feet, so you got about 350 feet.
300 feet, so-
Yeah.
So a football field?
Yep.
300, I'm sorry, can you hear that one?
From the fence to the house?
But then to the, to the property line, 150 feet.
Here. Right, so you got about-
Right, I, I, right. But I, I'm more concerned-
It's all wet on both sides, so when they talk about installing, planting trees, they can't really plant trees on either our side or their side, because it's all wet, they told us. So I'm not sure whether they'd be able to plant trees. Because it's wet on both sides, my side, you know, our properties.
Wet, like, wet, like-
Like swamp?
Like swamp, or wet, or wet-
It's, it's political, so I don't know where.
Can't touch it because of the wetlands.
Yeah, the wetlands line goes into, into their properties, kind of significantly, actually.
It's into here, something like this.
So where do you get plantable area, closer to the house?
Maybe not here.
But is that fair to ask a landowner to, I mean, what if they, what if, what if these people here wanted to, wanted to, you know, if they could, clear all this and put a garden in here?
They couldn't.
Well, if they could. It's in wetlands, so it's wetlands. Assuming that it's not, not wetlands, right? They still, they still own, own it. I, I think the owner should be on, on this side of the fence.
I'm not, I, you know what? That's up to you all to work that out, in my opinion.
And we've been asked to look at how we would buffer that.
Right.
And we can look at areas where we can plant trees.
Right.
We'll have to look at that, yeah.
But, you know, it's, it's- Could you give us an idea where you would think that would be if it's all wet on both sides of the property, all the way up?
There's area here between the fence and the wetland.
Yeah, because that's our, because that's what the criteria are. So the question is-
Well, the view from this house goes this way. This house goes this way.
The view from my house does not go that way.
You're looking, I, well, when I was out there-
Honestly, I left, but I have a pre-stirring hall.
Yep.
And so from the deck to the first floor, to, to our bedrooms, is, is not street level. And I can see right now the thick summer straight through.
Visibility from on to where the access-
I think, well, I'm not positive, but I think, when I looked, you were looking out in this field from your house.
But I can also see you walking all the way back to the, to the-
Right, we walked through here.
Nope, and you walked back into the-
Oh, we walked up here, yeah.
I could, I would physically see you in the thick summer.
Why does this have to be here? Can you move it that way?
The landowner, it's his choice of what, you know, he wants to develop this with a solar project, and it's-
Again, it's more than just having it there. It's, it's a big issue about property values and resale values, and there's a lot of other issues.
Just out of curiosity, do you all know the property owner?
Yeah.
Yes.
Kinda like, like that?
I know a lot.
You know? Okay.
But we weren't informed of this, we've known for years, we weren't informed of this until we got our certified mail over the July 2nd weekend. That was the first knowledge I had.
Okay, all right.
Can we just summarize your concerns? Is that okay?
Sure, why don't you go ahead and do that?
So there was stormwater concerns, there, their ca, over their calculations. Is that correct? There was concerns about the buffer between the location of the panels and Courtney Drive homes. Is that what I was hearing about the trees, where new trees were going? Is that correct? And what was the other one?
The OSRD, their concern is, you know, with OSRD, what would be the build-out of an OSRD? And if that has got these kinds of benefits, shouldn't this? And I think that that's-
But we haven't, you mean, if there was an OSRD? Because there's no OSRD.
Nope, there's no OSRD being-
We have no knowledge of this coming, so this is the first we've heard of this. Yes.
And the developer, and the landowner, to our knowledge, has no interest in doing an OSRD, or any residential development here.
Right.
As at the moment.
But you're using it as a, as a theoretical argument. That's fine.
And it, it, not only does it do it for the OSRD, it also triggers the protection of real property value with windmills. It does it with-
Right, right.
Cell towers.
Right.
Everything, but not in this, but the bylaw, see, personally, I think the bylaw needs to be amended for the solar arrays to include that, because it doesn't. It just says protection of, of- Include what? To include the protection of real property values. But how do you establish, establish that? They establish it for windmills, they establish it for, for other things.
I think we do have something. Don't we have something in there about property values? I think we do have something in there. I mean, I don't have it in front of me, but I think we do have something that's-
This is the health, health, safety, and welfare of the public. And that's a broad, a broad brush.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not gonna spend the time to go through this right now, but, but we'll look at that. I mean, I-
So that, that was the-
I have to say it's just not Courtney Drive. There's several people on Main Street, Hickory Lane, that are present tonight that also have a very big issue with this.
Did you identify yourselves?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm Jean McCarthy, I live at 5 Courtney Drive.
Okay.
Just so we have it.
So we have Jean. And your name again was?
Alicia, A-O-L-C-I, I'm Greta.
And someone else has the handle.
Anyone else wanna, have a-
Javier and Marshall from 6 Courtney Drive, so we are the last house.
Okay.
No, the other way. Oh, here?
Yes.
Greg White, this is Greg White.
Oh, oh, okay, sorry, right here.
Okay.
Uh, where you're putting the, the solar panels is not flat, man. So when you're saying it's how many feet we have of, of a buffer, we are looking at, if you're looking at-
Oh, a hill, up a hill, I guess.
Yes, those panels that are, when you say 20 feet, okay.
Yep, well, I have the grades, and what it does, right around the house is approximately where the upper grades here are gonna be. This goes down pretty substantially to the low point in the wetlands, and then goes back up. So the point right here in the middle is about even with your backyard.
So the high point of the panels is the grade?
About the grade at the house. The ground level at the house. So it's gonna be 10 feet above the grade at their house.
What did the elevations do you have for those two numbers? Just to confirm, 'cause they're doubting you. So just to say that you, that's all, that would just settle that question?
I think we bought a year ago, that house, in, in, that, we, yes. If you see, and we're talking about property values, it doesn't, it, it doesn't matter when you're buying a house and you see whether it-
Visual.
Sure.
When you're buying a house, it matters if you have a, a solar plant in your house.
They would have-
And when you Google Earth, our street, we see all the way to the 95. So if I was going to sell my house, and a potential buyer from a different area would wanna look at our house online, they, he or she would look on Google Earth, and they would see my house with a power plant behind it. And they'll go right by, I've talked to several relatives who are gonna go on record and say just that, that people would go away from potentials, power plants, solar plants. We have data that shows where they had the high-tension wires, where houses have gone down 30% in home value, values and sales. Both of them. Wes Newberry?
Let's get the number from him now, if you don't mind.
Yep, this is, this is around 78, right at the house. This is around 64, and the top of this, the ground level is 78, 78 and a half.
So he's saying, but that would be then 10 feet above that? So it'd be 10 feet over, okay.
Right, they're gonna sit on the grade of 78.
And there's trees in between there, correct?
Are they coniferous or they all deciduous?
There's a mix.
Mix.
Yep.
Just, yep, Eric.
Hi, Eric Swan, fourteen old driveway, do you have a section drawn through the site?
Nope.
It would be helpful if you.
Yep.
Took the time to draw a section because then the height of trees, the location of trees.
Yep.
And the third floor bedroom would all be.
I was thinking, in addition, they could do, they could go out and flag things, you know, and then come back and look in, from your yard and your yard and your yard, and just see what you see.
You wouldn't be able to tell because the trees aren't cleared yet.
Well, you can do it in November. I mean, see what you can do it, but, you know. So anyway, uh, any other com- thank you, Eric. Any other, uh, comments from anyone? Anybody on the board, no?
I, I just, as far as Steve's presentation, no, but I do have comments on this before you close it up and go to next topic.
Okay, so, uh, doesn't anyone else want anything to hear from Steve? No, if not, I think we're done with that, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Done, okay.
Appreciate it. And so I think that the, the issue that we have on this project is, I'm not sure if we have time to do it tonight, but maybe we have, you know, maybe a few of us get together with, with, uh, Martha, and go over our concerns and then prepare a letter to the, to the board.
Martha.
What do you think?
Oh, yes, I agree. Do you agree?
Yes.
Okay, John, is that?
I'm good.
Yeah, okay, so, I mean, I, I think you've heard the concerns that we've raised, you've heard, obviously, the community, that's nothing new. Um, they've raised these concerns, uh, for a little bit of a while now. Uh, and again, the same question I had on the revenue for the Middle Road project, I have exactly, and even more so here. It's even more poignant that if the town is going to give up something in terms of what their criteria are, it really has to have it met, both from a, um, landscaping point of view and from a resource point of view, so, okay.
Martha, would you explain to me how this process is working now, with the Board of Selectmen or the Special Granting Authority? If we were, if it, if we had, if we were the granting authority, we'd have a consultant review of their calcs, who's, who's doing the review?
There's, um, the, well, there is an outside consultant who's reviewing the revenue stream, the, the financial agreement portion of it.
But as far as the stormwater calcs?
There's no outside consultant reviewing that.
So there's no one reviewing their calcs?
On the town's behalf.
Is there anyone, now, whenever we do a subdivision, we always, when you have a road access, say, on the Middle Road, we have a traffic, we didn't hear about that, traffic volume, I'm assuming it's very minimum, but I'm not quite sure at this point.
Steve, Steve was going to comment to that.
And.
Did you have traffic?
I, it's. I can comment to that, during construction there'll be traffic, but once it's built, no.
That's what I figured.
They'll be going into the sites twice a year to cut the grass.
So the other concern I have is on these roads right now that are not being used, is even if there's only once a year, um, that windy road down Middle Road and all, um, visibility, I don't know who's looking at the overall plan to make sure there's, you know, everything has the right site. Also, the stormwater, I know that John talked about the clearing of the overall site, but I'm not really so much worried about the site. I'm worried about more, you know, is there going to be any kind of puddles or runoff when it's like icy or snow coming onto Middle Road? That's my concern, more safety in the town, having to deal with it, especially Tim. I think that he should be, someone should be looking into this. Um, what was the other one? Proposed traffic, traffic patterns, visibility, and it was already covered, I agree. I think there needs to be some type of section, like, um.
Section would be good.
Just, that was actually brought up before, the previous, um, application, so I'm surprised that didn't make it this time.
Kathleen, if I understand you correctly, your primary concern stormwater-wise is its effect on existing town roads, not within the development itself, but is it going to be discharging onto town roads in a way that's harmful?
And also the visibility of a large truck coming out onto Middle Road, I want to make sure there's enough clearing so the traffic coming by it can see it. I don't know, there's, there's a lot of vegetation on that corner where that road is, there's no, you can't really see. It's going to be something like we have over at the, uh, car rental place going into the rotary, where you can't see coming out the, the road, that's my concern.
When you say the trucks, you mean during construction or something?
Well, anybody coming in and out, I mean, someone should be looking at this.
Well, what kind of traffic, I mean, when, when you say minimal traffic in and out, who's, who's coming in and out? Uh, once, once it's done, pickup truck with a lawnmower? Yeah, right, alright, okay, okay.
So that's something that, some, if we were reviewing this application, that's something that we would have reviewed and made sure it was safe, it's a safety issue for traffic. I'm finished now.
Okay, alright, anyone else from the board? So our recommendation is, maybe, um, Kathleen, do you have time, or?
Next week, not this week.
Not this week, so I think that we need to sit down, we've got to have something by Tuesday.
Right.
So, maybe you and I can sit down tomorrow and craft something out and then get it out for, George, you have some time tomorrow?
Yes.
Alright, so maybe the three, well, wait a minute, do you want to join us and help us undo this?
I, I don't think I can do anything tomorrow.
Well, you're welcome, thank you.
What time are you doing, I might be able to, if you do it earlier.
Oh, if there's going to be something, a formal letter from the board, it really needs to go to a vote and a meeting. I wonder if we should try to set up a special meeting for Monday.
Alright.
John, I'm fine.
Well, here's what I'm going to do, is the C N for the, um, the curve number for the panels has taken on a life of its own, so I'm going to track down the guidance from, uh, D E P that tells you what that. Phil Christensen is a good engineer, I've known him forever, and, uh, we go back thirty-five years or so. I just don't agree with him on this, and, uh, you know, we need to pull out something that.
This doesn't have to be a magnum opus, it just has to be point by point that we agree on. So why don't, can we set up a meeting of the board for Monday morning? Eight-thirty? I've got a meeting at ten that I've got to do, or ten-thirty.
Yeah, I'd say anytime after, after eight o'clock, I'll have to post it tomorrow morning, so that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Is that, you can't do that.
When?
Uh, Monday morning at ten? Or, excuse me, eight, 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 eight-thirty?
Yes.
Okay, let's set up a meeting for Monday morning at eight-thirty. In the meantime, you and I will talk tomorrow about the issues and sketch them out so that we can maybe have a graph for the board to look at on Monday morning, and then we'll get into the Board of Selectmen, okay? Is that okay with you, George?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Steve, I have a question, if I may ask it, John. You talked about the elevation in the center of the field, what is the elevation in Middle Road compared to that, you know? In terms of drainage?
On Middle Road?
Yeah, if it's coming down the Middle Road, and people are concerned about water on Middle Road coming in from the site. I'm not sure.
Middle Road, we're accessing the site, this is an existing dirt drive, pretty much. So I can tell you it slopes up pretty significantly to here.
Okay.
But it's following an existing dirt, dirt gravel road.
Now, we wa- we, George, George walked it, we walked it.
Yeah, that's where we walked in.
It was fairly flat in the beginning, I thought.
Right, and then it, right here.
It graduates.
Yeah, it gradually goes up, and then it's pretty flat back here.
George, I'm not concerned there will be a problem, I'm just saying someone should be making sure.
There might be.
There's no one looking at it.
Yeah, all, all the access points are existing access points now. So, we're not changing any of the access, this exists, this exists, this exists. And on the, um, the, the Main Street property, we're going on an existing driveway. So I don't, we're not changing any drainage there.
Again, I'm not implying that there's going to be a problem, I'm just saying that we're taking your word, and in the past, there's been issues when we've taken applicants' words, so I, we always like to review things and make sure and check, that's all.
I don't anticipate any problems with using existing access, okay.
Okay.
Steve, you gave away a, a D E P publication to Tracy the other night, what is it called?
But it's, um, their handbook on developing solar panels on landfills.
Handbook, solar panels on?
It reference, it just references that D E P considers solar panels to be impervious.
Yeah, no, I know, I've, I've seen that i- in smaller quantities, uh, published, but I've never looked at the whole, the whole, uh, document, so I, given that it's an issue, I'm, I'm going to.
And being on a landfill or here, it, it doesn't matter, it's the same.
Well, it either is impervious or it isn't. It's like being a little bit pregnant, you can't be a little bit pregnant, you can't be a little bit impervious, so.
It just doesn't matter, yep, it's one of the other, yep.
Okay, anything from anyone else, we're going to move on, Mr.
Do any of you want a separate copy of the solar bylaw to mark up as you're thinking about?
Of the bylaw?
Yeah.
I have it.
It's the same one.
Am I right, same one in, in, in the zoning? Yeah, no, I've got it.
If you have an extra, I'll take it, just sits there.
Oh, there are extras?
Yeah, those are extras.
Oh, we'll take it then, thanks. George?
I have it at home.
Oh, okay. Alright, Tom?
Thank you, good night.
This is, uh, Tom Minetta, of Tom Minetta, Inc., special permit site plan review application for T W Excavating at one oh eight Newbury Port Turnpike. Mr. Minetta, it's good to see you back here.
Thank you.
You getting all your clientele off of Newbury Port Turnpike?
It appears so. I can't, I can't get off the road, I guess. So, uh, for the record, Tom Minetta from Thomas Minetta Incorporated, um, representing T W Excavating tonight. Um, with me from T W is Dana Warren and Jesse Warren.
Hello.
How are you?
So I have the application for the special permit and the site plan.
Okay.
So there's sixteen copies for site plan review, and nine copies of the special permit.
Can you pass that down?
What is it? Oh, right, okay.
Martha, I want it.
I'm standing.
You have to have an extra copy, do you?
I've got Dana's first name and what was the other Warren's first name? Jesse, Jess?
I don't have to.
Jesse.
By tomorrow. Oh, she's going to stamp it, are you, oh, okay.
She will, too.
So, I mean, this site, it's, um, this site here is one oh eight Newbury Port Turnpike, I think everybody's familiar, I think there was a, I think a pre-meeting, right? We had kind of informal meeting. Um, so we've actually cleaned up the plan a little bit since probably the last time you saw it. You know, in red, on the, I'll just kind of outline this plan quickly, in red is the, um, the existing structures, there's three trailers towards the front of the property, and then a, um, seventy by, seventy by seventy-five garage in the middle of the property. Um, these shaded areas are existing pavement that's out there. Uh, the wetlands has been flagged by, uh, Mike DeRosa, that's in green on the plan. Uh, let's see, so, the overall development of this plan, they're going to, they want to move their facility from Rowley to, to one location here in Newbury, so, you know, they're a site contracting excavation company. Uh, so we need a special permit for the storage of the, um, outside products such as stone, loam, uh, gravel, maybe mulch, whatever it might be, raw material storage. Um, so for that, we need a special permit. You know, this is the business light industrial zone, uh, so these three areas shown on the plan are for three separate things. This would be for the raw material storage, this would be for, um, you know, trucks, uh, heavy equipment storage. And this area in yellow, outlined in yellow would be, uh, trailers, uh, pipe, um, you know, outside storage of, of some materials that are non-hazardous. There'll also be, uh, four storage containers, there are ten by forty out there, um, so some of the more valuable stuff they can put inside and lock up. Um, you know, as, as everybody knows, the site is surrounded by wetlands and, you know, you have your cattails out front here, but we're also proposing an additional, uh, forty-five albatross trees along the perimeter of, of, uh.
In the front or the back?
The front.
Big ones.
Well, fi- five to six footers.
Big ones.
Yep, five to six footers, big ones. A lot of big ones, has a, a, a lot of five to six footers. You know, when you drive by the site now, you, you, you can't see in it, obviously, you have the growth from the, the wetlands, but, um, everything is going to be well off, um, you know, the, the storage of materials is well off the street line. There is no proposed grading changes, no increase of impervious materials, no additional pavement, concrete, or anything. Everything that's out there will be maintained, and we'll just use the site as it sits.
Tom, what are those two gray things on either side of the lodge or orange?
The, this is existing pavement that's out there.
That's all, that, that's existing pavement?
That's existing pavement, yep, so we are proposing no impervious materials, no pavement, no concrete.
Yeah.
This green area is that stand of pine trees that's there.
Okay, now, they, the bigger orange is Dave Pritchard's barn former, is the.
Hmm, that one.
That, yeah.
Yeah, it's an existing garage, it's a seventy by seventy-five foot garage.
Okay.
And these are the three trailers up by the street. So we'll maintain the fence that's out there, there'll be, it'll be gated, basically, just like it is now. Uh, we've provided, uh, some, to, to meet the bylaw, we've, we've shown parking, um, but the whole area is gravel, so it's, it's not like we're going to be paving a surface and lining it. I did it just so you could see that there's obviously plenty of room for parking out here. You know, we showed, like, a total of twenty-five spaces, they have a maximum, you know, their potential, uh, talking with them for the next five years, a potential growth of twen- you know, a total of twenty employees, we've shown twenty-five spaces, uh, and obviously, you know, you look throughout the site, you know, there, there's no, no issue with parking whatsoever out here.
Where will the employees be ensconced?
Uh, right along here.
No, where, where will there, will there be inside offices?
They, they'll maintain these as offices.
Oh, they'll maintain the, the.
Most of the employees come in the morning.
They come in and they get in.
Get in their truck, trailer, machine, whatever it may be, they leave the site.
Right.
They might come back during the day to grab something, but, you know, then they all come back at the end of the day.
Are there any improvements scheduled for any of the structures?
There is not.
Okay, are there any problems with any of the structures?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, if we were to drive by and see your facility in Rowley, would we get a good idea about how you would treat this facility?
No.
So you don't, you don't want me to do that?
Well, you, you move them to the problem, the why we're moving is because we're, we're operating out of, you know, a couple of different places that have, we haven't fit in them in ten years.
He said that last time he was in.
I had to ask him again.
It's like, it's like a cluttered room, you can't make it look good because there's nowhere to put anything. It's, it's, you know, both of our pieces don't, both the pieces we work out of right now are even equal to a quarter of the size of this property.
Right, that's right.
So it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's.
We get ten pounds in a two-pound bucket.
And your lease with Mr. Pritchard is for an extended period of time?
No, we're.
Oh, you're buying it?
Right, to buy it.
Oh, that's different, am I right, last time you were here, you, you weren't sure?
While, while we were in the middle of trying to hammer out with him what, you know.
That's good.
Yeah, he was.
Good.
It's a sizable deposit, we weren't even sure if we could come up with that to begin, that would be based on what we're asking a lot for us.
And so I assume all of the trailers and the K-line stuff is going to be moved out by Mr. Pritchard?
Yes, except for, we're proposing four right, right back here.
Four?
Four. Four ten by, I think that, not quite ten, but forty foot long, so that's, that's actually what's shown right here.
They won't be visible down now, won't, uh.
And, and he just needs to, and he'll maintain the ownership of them, or you need them?
No, they'll, they'll, they're ours.
Oh, they're yours?
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, they'll, but, I'm sorry, they'll, yeah, or the, they'll buy their own.
They'll be, they'll be.
For your business.
For your business.
Correct, correct.
We're trying to figure if you have two businesses going on the same site.
No, no, no.
That's why we're asking.
Okay.
All his will be gone, they will own the ones that will be there.
Okay, okay, okay. John?
No, I need to look at the drawings, obviously.
Right, right.
Right, and we do have to file with the Conservation Commission where, where that.
How much time do we have to review this?
Um, well, we should, um.
Sixty-five days, right, to have a hearing?
I think some, I forget, something like that.
I'm forgetting right now, too.
Yeah, sixty-five days to have a hearing.
Well, you won't see us until next month, right, the Concom?
Right.
So.
Right.
You know, there's.
We've met, you know, I have met with Doug once before, but, yeah, we need to, to do an official filing.
I have lots of questions.
I think, um, probably the Concom meeting would be September sixteenth, does that sound, have you talked to Doug about that?
Sounds right.
Sounds right.
Okay, and potentially, because of advertising time, we could be looking at potentially the seventeenth of September for.
Right, because we need two weeks, we need fourteen days.
Kathleen, do you have a comment?
I have lots.
Two. Okay.
I think you've heard them before, so there's nothing new. One is the concerns of, we've gone through this before with the bus companies, so it's just things that are going to be mentioned anyways, public hearing. Um, the noises from trucks backing up, I'm married to a contractor, I know you guys have crazy hours, you can get out early, you can come in late. Um, the trucks backing up can make noise, we're going to want to know those hours.
So hours of operation?
Yes, also dust control on the site, I don't know, I'm assuming that you'll have dirt, so soil.
There's a lot of stone out there now that is, uh, evolved stone, let me go to that, or does it?
I don't mean so much driving.
Piles?
I mean what you're storing, you're stockpiling. I mean what you're storing, you're stockpiling. Um, again, I'm married to a contractor. I know what, you know, depending on who's running a site, it might not be an issue, or it could be an issue. Lights, where are you placing your lights for your, um, overall, how are they gonna affect the neighbors?
The lights, there, there's no proposed lighting other than what's already out there. So, there's existing lights on either side of this garage. There's one here. There's one here. I believe there is one more over here. So, the existing lights are the only thing that's proposed.
All right. Um, the other issue is, from experience, the board and the other boards know that this can be messy. This can be caused, um, mud, rocks on the Route One area. What exactly, I don't know how to even address that.
Well, the messiness comes from a combination of mud and gravel as they're on-site and they bring that onto Route One.
But I'm just saying, I don't, how are we gonna maintain it so it's not a nuisance?
Well, this, it's not a construction site, so it's not, you know, we don't expect that.
It's just stuff coming in and out.
It shouldn't be any different than any trucks and vehicles that will come in and out of the property already. Did, did you guys have trouble with Dave's trucks?
I'm just kind of thinking of some comments and complaints that have been raised from more on the byfield area of a similar type business.
Sure, yeah.
So, that's where it's coming out.
Like we come in, well, we, we only treat sweeper as well. I mean, we have a problem.
You mentioned that the last time.
Yeah, if we have a problem, we can handle it ourselves as well.
That's a great response. That's a great response.
I mean, we don't anticipate having subtracting stuff on the road from, like, we would at like a job site.
And again, please don't think it's that I think that you're gonna do something bad, but we have had applicants that come in, say one thing, and once it's done, said, something else happens. So, this is why you're getting this brunt of these questions, okay?
The site, just so you know, too, the, the surface of the site is such that it's, it's actually, um, I guess they've been compacted in, but it's stone about this big that's been compacted into the ground.
I'm not, I'm not worried about so much parking lot. I'm worried what you're hauling, what's falling off, what's bouncing off trucks. Again, I'm married to a contractor. You guys keep messing.
They keep neat trucks, how's that? But, yeah, no, we, I think the perfect answer was we, they own a sweeper.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, try to be extra careful of that because it's, it's, it's a huge insurance liability, really. You know, we, we have gotten calls for broken windshields and stuff, and it's been just, um, well, heck, they wanted, one of the trucks to haul salt one day, and it's just small pieces. I've gotten broken windshield's off of, just a oil tank blown by it, so we, you're very careful. I'm very on my guys about...
And, and again, I don't expect you to come up with an answer right now. This is definitely what's gonna be brought up at the public hearing, so you can think about it and figure out how you're gonna respond then.
Yeah.
Not trying to give you a hard time, just kind of bringing up all the concerns that people are gonna have.
They're supposed to check their load in terminal loads and make sure they're secure before they leave or come in.
Okay. And that, so it's basically, when you're looking at design criteria, my biggest concern really has to do with A, just so you know. All right. Told you I had a lot.
Um, George?
Uh, yes, on storage of material, the last time we talked about structures to hold the material uncovered, but just structures going along to keep material in one place. Are you considering that?
We, we actually took that off. That was, uh, that was here along the frontage.
And that's going to the back now?
That, yeah, so these will just be piles towards the back. There'll be nothing out front by the street.
But they will, will be just piles, or will there be a concrete structure to put the piles in?
It'll actually just be a pile. Might be numerous piles, you know, there might be a, a pile of stone here.
Is that the way you do it in Rowley? Do you do that, that, just put them in piles? You don't, you don't put them in like designated, you know, bins? Thank you.
It depends what it is. I mean, the stuff comes and goes, you know, if it's not, um, it's not a large amount of one thing, then it's gone, and then, you know what I mean? So, it's, we wouldn't have to make bins to delineate certain types of materials, like if you went into, like, Bentley Ward and had a pile of stone and a pile of, you know what I mean? So...
Yeah, I mean, it's just one of those things that depending upon the amount of stuff being stored, it can either be great or exceedingly unsightly for neighbors. I mean, just, or, or for people on the street, so...
That, uh, that section is back behind Dave's son's house, and there's a bank in back in there.
Yeah. Okay. So, ma- maybe, um, do you, do you own it yet?
No, we don't.
No, they have it under agreement.
Yeah. We don't own it, but we'll wait and see how it...
I wouldn't mind walking the site. I've never walked the site. Probably, you got, you know the property, right?
Well, I've never walked it. I know the property, but I've never walked it.
I don't know.
Maybe we can certainly do a site walk.
Yeah, we can schedule a site walk.
I'd be happy to walk it.
Anybody have an interest in that? You have an interest in a site walk?
Sure.
Yes.
You might wanna do a site walk sometime in the next, all right?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, so Martha will coordinate that with you.
Okay.
I guess the question is, should it happen after the public hearing opens so that a butters, if they're interested, can also...
I think you're right.
Yes, it should. Okay.
We do have a sign by law, bring it to your attention, because it's, we don't ask for that, though, in the site plan review, though, do we?
I think, yeah, that was one of my questions, actually, how...
Well, the existing sign out there is four by eight. So, the, the idea was we're just gonna resurface that existing. It's a metal sign with, um, sticky letters on it, so that...
Oh, we're gonna wanna see that, then.
You, you did... I just had a question.
Go ahead.
You did mention something about hours of operation. A lot of our stuff is weather permitting and everything we do, we're about on, on the highway with, during snow, we're gonna see and stuff, and we do unload ships to come in all kind, all hours, all hours of the night, and we can be sat in any different hours. So, we, that's one thing that would be very hard, still, when they're just coming in and out. We wouldn't be working there.
It's just better to be upfront with the neighbors than to say one thing and then something else happen, that's all.
Is there a description somewhere in your application about all, what, what is this business?
Yes.
What all the things, what are all the functions that will happen on this property?
I believe so. We can go into further detail if you'd like after you read the applications.
Well, we'll read it, and then if we have questions.
I went through, you know, your, your two, uh, permit applications and answered all those questions.
Okay.
A through, I think it's A through F about, you know, access and what the company does, the proposed use, things like that.
Okay.
Traffic, all that.
What do we do for Chrissy's application? Do we ask for like a, um, we asked for a sign and landscape, didn't we?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Architectural renderings and plans and stuff for that.
The cap and sign...
Because they were making changes. No, you, you know what.
Yeah, I think they, um, we had cut sheets from one of the local sign companies of, because they were gonna use that existing pool.
Right.
Which we can do, too.
Yeah, I think we should get, I think we should get that. But we will get, obviously, to you is, I don't know how, how quick we can do it, but you, uh... Uh, we meet again in early September, September third?
Yeah, we meet on the third.
So, maybe we can have a discussion about this.
All right, and I've gone through, I've, I've gone through the special permit application once and did give some questions and comments to Tom, which he's picked up, but...
Right, which have been addressed in this.
Right.
Okay.
More thorough review.
Anyone else on the board have any other questions or concerns?
Just going back to signs again, Martha, can you provide a copy of the sign by law regulations to Jess and Dana?
I can give it to, to Tom, and then he could pass it to me.
That's the way to do it, fine.
It would be good to have at least awareness of it with the permitting process, because, yeah, you have one sign now, but maybe later on, I want another sign. You never know. It's just be, good to be aware of what...
We're, we're trying to make Route One look a little better, and there's a lot of opportunities.
I didn't even realize what was there. I didn't pay attention myself until someone, I stopped by there last night. The sign isn't a bad look. It's a stainless steel plate, and he actually just has a small round logo on it. And I was almost looking at that, saying, Jesus, I think I'd almost just put the, our logo right over his. It's not a bad-looking sign. He had a light on it that actually had a remote to it, so that if, uh, when the trucks were pulling out at certain hours, it would actually turn on the volume light, so that they would, you know, kind of give somebody come down, I, uh, Route One, you know, let them know that something's going on. Kind of a unique idea.
That's interesting.
Okay.
We signed about, we just use what's there.
I see that sign almost every day, and it is a tasteful sign. It's not bad.
Yeah.
I don't know the sign.
Yeah, I've seen it a couple. By the way, you had mentioned that there were, uh, cat and nine tails and stuff. Isn't that all fragmites?
Yes.
There's a lot of fragmites out there.
Yeah.
There's cat nine tails, too.
Yeah, couples, but not as much as the fragmites.
Fragmites is, yeah.
Yeah.
You're correct.
Do we wanna keep that there? You wanna get rid of that stuff? Don't you wanna get rid of that stuff?
It's a good buffer.
It's not a bad buffer, not in the winter. Anyway, I just, that's, that's, we're, we're just...
It'll get cleaned out eventually.
Although, actually, I think it's...
Yeah, if the swale gets cleaned out.
I'm not sure how much. I think it's in the Route One right-of-way, so I'm not sure how much...
Who does what? All right, you know what?
A ditch would belong to the state, doesn't it?
I think so.
Not, not a major thing. Uh, Eric, might you have a, a comment or a question or an observation about it?
No, I drive by the site, carry them out, and I'll have to drive by and really take a good look at it, because you don't, I don't know as much.
Yeah, right.
That's my only comment.
Yeah, okay. All right, so what is our official action tonight?
Um, so the board needs to vote to accept the application and then set a public hearing date.
Okay. Um, so, do I have a motion to accept the application?
The application is complete, Martha. Best of your knowledge?
To the best of my knowledge. The basics are there.
Move to, move to accept the application.
And actually, we've got two applications. I don't know if you wanna lump them together, if you wanna...
Why are they two? Cause you said...
We've got the special permit for the open storage of raw materials and then the site plan review.
Oh, yeah, lump them together.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, passes unanimously. Now, we need to set a date for the public hearing.
I said the seventeenth, right?
Do you think we have time to do that?
That was my suggestion, um...
So, that's really a month from tonight. You'd like it fast, right?
Yes.
The sooner the better.
That's, that's as soon as we could do it with...
Well, that's, I don't, it's not a hugely complex thing, I don't think. I mean, it's...
What date are you looking at?
The seventeenth of September.
Yes, I think you should move it along.
Yeah, let's move it along. So, let's set it for the seventeenth of September.
So, somebody wanna make a motion to do that?
So, move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you doing it seven o'clock? I mean, at seven thirty?
Seven fifteen is what we usually try to do, okay? Seven fif-, uh, September seventeenth at seven fifteen.
You're at Town Hall.
At Town Hall. I'm not sure. There's really not many of butters, are there?
Actually, that's not true. You're gonna get all the ones, the residential behinds.
The residential behind?
Yeah.
Well, I think they should be happy.
We do have the butters list.
Okay.
We promise to, uh, make it accessible to remove the beevers anytime necessary.
Right, they have public relations comment.
Leon Newberry. Okay, I, I think we're done. Tom?
You guys.
Tom, thank you. Nice meeting you both. Okay. Mr. Swan, you're here to enlighten us. Do you need, um, do you wanna just sit in front and chat, or...
Sure.
Okay, why don't you bring us, um, here, why don't you take mine?
Okay.
Vice Chair.
Oh, okay.
I don't need to say anything. Here.
Good. Glad to be before you. Good to see you guys. Nice to see you. So, Eric Swan, fourteen Old Farm Way. Appreciate your time to meet this evening. Uh, I'm here as the chairman of the Newbury Municipal Building Committee. And the Newbury Municipal Building Committee was created by the selectmen in March with purposes of trying to correct the deficiencies of the police station, uh, and with that, the Town Hall facilities. The municipal building committee grew out of the Public Safety Complex Committee, which was a committee focused on looking at the adjacent Fire Company Number Two's property in terms of negotiating a purchase of that property in which to combine a police station and a fire station into one facility that would have some synergies of shared, uh, spaces and development costs and, uh, be located close to Town Hall and keep the two departments very close to where they originally were. So, the negotiations, uh, failed, and the, um, dilemma with that is Fire Company Two still has some issues that they need to resolve, and their facilities are, and their equipment are in need, but we're not here to talk about that. The committee and the selectmen have moved on, and the municipal building committee is now focused on facilities of the Town Hall and the police station. So, with that, um, two thousand four, the town realized that they needed a master plan update. That was the planning board's charge. I guess the plan, the master plan was, uh, nineteen eighty. Two thousand four, it needed an update, and in some of the initial documentation from two thousand four, some of the needs of the city, I think these are the first or second lines, said, "Police Department, new police department facilities." So, here we are in two thousand ten, and we're still talking about a police department, and even though the master plan's been updated several times, and you're talking about updating it again, I would hope that the committee, the municipal building committee, could be successful in wa- raising awareness and, um, providing the police station with what they need, the police department with the police station, so that they can properly serve the town. And it's not part of a master plan in the future that you're about to embark on or should embark on. The police station's right below us in the basement of the Town Hall. It's been there for thirty-four years. Um, population has changed, size of the department have changed. Law enforcement criteria and regulations have changed, but the space of the police department has not changed. Town Hall has, this Town Hall property has a sewer issue, and they bear the brunt of the sewer issue in the basement below us.
Septic issue.
Septic issue. Thank you. Hopefully, it will become a sewer fix, okay? It's a good catch, have to remember that. And so, the municipal building committee has, through an outside consultant, put together a, uh, program for the police station, for the Town Hall. A, a simple budget on a gross construction per square foot cost has been run. We're trying to move this forward as quickly as possible, and at this point, we're trying to engage everybody in town that should have a say, meaning every resident and every department and every committee. So, I'm here to ask your good knowledge and opinion of the city to help with the site selection process are part of, um, of this endeavor. With that, we have four, um, options that have, the board is focused on, and there were other options of other site locations in town, and it seemed that everybody had a, everybody put a horse in the race, but everybody's horse had kind of a, an issue. So, with that, and from the, out of the Public Safety Complex Committee, the four options are... Eric, can I just, who's on the committee with you? Tracy's on the committee, Martha's on the committee, Deputy Chief John Lucy's on the committee, I'm on the committee, a citizen named Richard Rondard's on the committee, um...
Sam.
Sam?
Sam Jocelyn.
Sam Jocelyn is on the committee.
And Steve Fram.
And Steve Fram. And we have one or two other people in town who are citizens that have asked interest to attend a meeting, but they have a problem making a seven o'clock, seven in the morning meeting. Seven in the morning's easy for me, so...
Damon Jesperson has been, uh, essentially appointed by the selectmen to be the selectman liaison.
I see.
And Frank Visconti from the Capital Planning Committee is their liaison, although he hasn't attended yet.
Junior members get to show up early, go to the early meetings.
Bring the coffee, yeah.
Bring their coffee, yeah.
So, I've been to the, um, spring annual town meeting and made a, an abbreviated report from what I had planned to, to give. I've been before the Board of Selectmen twice now, and will be before them next Tuesday again, uh, and will be before them every opportunity I get to keep moving this forward to get their involvement and engagement in this. And as we present the issues, there seems to be a little discussion like, "This is what we're doing, and we need you to approve," and they're like, "Well, we're not really sure we're the ones to approve." So, trying to get consensus from the boards and committees in town so that we can all come together on this, and it's not one person always trying to figure out what, what next is coming, or, um, take this from a political issue to a needs issue. And I'm not here to discuss all the needs. I have a report. You're the first committee to get the report. And in this, um, report, there's program that's laid out. As I said, there's a budget. There's four proposed options for sites, and then in the back, there is backup, but really, if you have any issue, you should just, if you haven't been downstairs, go downstairs and take a look.
We've all been down.
Okay, and it also is... You'd be down there because you wanna be down, or you have to...
If it's an experienced one, we'll never forget.
Okay.
Ever.
So, with that, we have some public, um, outreach. I think after this report gets issued to the Board of Selectmen, I have a chance to talk to them. I'm going to the, we'll find out how to go to the Finance Committee and the Capital Planning Committee and present the port, report as well. And then it's time to, to make it and go public and figure out how we can let the citizens know what the issues are and what the proposed options are. The options I have, um, well, I'll just go through them, and then I can explain how, for better or for worse, how they came about. So, option one is a renovation to Town Hall, which has an addition on the side to improve inspectional services. It's all in the report here, if you guys want to take copious notes, or if, you know, no, you don't wanna read it right this second, but... Thank you. Can I keep these, too?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, sure.
Can you keep Town Hall operating while you do this renovation?
Well, it, let me, let me just skip through the, so, one is Town Hall renovation with an addition to improve inspectional services department. Renovate some part of the basement and add an addition behind us where the trailers are for the police department.
So, keep everything here?
Keep the police here.
Keep the police here.
Keep them downstairs.
Keep them half downstairs and half in a new two-story addition right behind you where the trailers are.
So, basically, it's present conditions on steroids, it's been improved.
Yes, it's, and I might call that the Band-Aid approach.
So, Band-Aid, that's what I would call it.
Okay, so, that's the Band-Aid approach. Option two, for better for worse, is to tear Town Hall down and put a new police station and a new Town Hall right here with better configured spaces. Now, my opinion, Town Hall is quaint and it works fairly well. There are some offices that could be improved and the septic to sewer issue is something that's going to come up whether this happens or not, if anybody's in this building. Um, the police station is so deficient in its spaces and in the layout of those spaces that you just can't, there's no way to fix the, the station. And basically, the square footage for the new, a new police station that has the basic requirements for a police station is about nine thousand square feet and there's thirty-two hundred square feet in the basement. So, I don't have to go into need of being grossly inadequate.
And then they're using the two.
And they're using the two trailer spaces is correct. And just the function that the same public person that comes in to get a boat permit, a dog license, or apply for a firearm application, has a small, tiny lobby in which to present themselves to the police and if, if by chance, uh, somebody's coming in under custody, you, they have to do a sequence where they clear somebody out in order to bring the same, the person in custody in. It's, well, it's a safety issue and then to bring a person in custody that might not want to be in custody, um, sort of tussling through is just a super liability for the officers and for the person in custody. I mean, you just can't imagine the, the total inaccurate in, in, not inaccurate, inappropriate means of spaces they have. And then, once they get somebody down right below us where the holding cells are, they have supposedly a male, a female, and a, um, a minor cell, they can't hold anybody in the cells. The cells are so deficient that they, if they have to hold somebody in a cell, they have to put a police officer in a chair directly in front of that person and watch them twenty-four seven because of, um, I won't just go, just...
Safety.
Safety issues. The police department has continuously failed inspection by the state. In January, they failed inspection. I have reports on that. And the other option is, is once, if they have somebody and they have to do something with them and keep them in custody, that officer has to then drive them to the Middleton Correction Facility. If we only have three people on staff at most given time, which is a dispatcher, there's a sergeant on parole patrol on one car somewhere and there's another person in a patrol car somewhere else, if they bring a person in in custody and they can't hold them but have to hold that person, then that person has to leave Newbury, go and take an hour and a half ride down, do a booking process and come back. And so, we've just cut our, uh, our, our public safety services in town by half.
Wipes half a shift.
It, and it wipes half a shift and it, you know, it's costing money to do something that we shouldn't have to do and there's, there's dollars wasted. There's some sixty thousand dollars that's already been spent this year on Band-Aids and patching and new floors and new drywall because of flooding and septic backup issues, uh, bugs, snakes, other kind of animals down there. And if you were to go to, now, if you go down there, I mean, they have a temporary little container out there because everything is discombobulated while they're putting down new floors, trying to paint walls and patch things. One of the items that we are planning to do is do a video where we would walk through the police department and downstairs and then come up here and give an interview with select people, hopefully, selectmen, um, the police chief, the deputy police chief, maybe myself, and giving small antidotes about what people are seeing and then be able to put that on Channel Nine so that, you know, people, everybody seems to have a fear of the police department unless you really need them. And so, people just don't show up and are, are interested to take a look around. They just, you know, little kids are more friendly to police officers than the average person in town just because of an association with, with getting near the police, I guess. So, back to the options. Option two is take downtown hall, uh, reconfigure the lot lower a little bit so that you have better accessibility issues into Town Hall and create a Town Hall up front and a police sta, department in the back that have some connection in terms of mechanical space, maybe a shared elevator, a shared stair, but they're actually two separate functioning buildings and so, you're not really getting people in Town Hall mixing with the police except for one entrance on the side. And we have plans of that, there are plans printed in here, small scale? Right. Option three then... Option three is renovate Town Hall.
For Town Hall.
For Town Hall and move the police station somewhere else in town in what I'll call a yet-to-be-determined site. Call it the governor's site, call it the town forest site, but it's a police station that's on undeveloped land somewhere in town and it's a brand-new building. And if the s, septic sewer fix gets put in downstairs, it is possible that a few offices could be put along the front, uh, on the Morgan Ave side to alleviate some office space up here and there would be minimal expansion to Town Hall.
Would it include conference room? That's one thing that we're lacking.
I, I have a, I have, they have programs in here and that's, if you're good at looking at programs, looking at that. I'm interested in your opinion. Um, option one is the renovation, option two is the new, option three is the new police station with some renovation to Town Hall, and option four is Town Hall moves somewhere else in town and the police station occupies this building and we're moving that from occupy, renovate this building to tear down the Town Hall and make a new police station here because you can't renovate this sufficiently to be a police station.
Right.
So, those are the four options. There are numbers in this report. I'm working hard to use some favors from estimator friends to double-check the costs so I have more accurate costs, but, um, the, they're, they're all eight million dollars within a couple hundred thousand of each other.
Hmm. Really? All eight million?
Yeah. And so, that's where we started, that's what I have in the report. I, I need to do some work to come up with some other numbers. And then, on a spreadsheet, what I've done is I've said, "Okay, um, construction costs, non-construction costs, and FF and E that come right out of the report." Then I said, "Okay, if we have to move, if we have to have temporary facilities, if there's sewer connections, if there's site costs," and that happens for both the Town Hall and the police department, we'll then have a budget and a square foot that adds up to a project option. Then with that, I did my own sort of, uh, tax rate increase by using the assessment classifications and came up with a, an average tax increase to the average property, which is four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, about two hundred, two hundred and one dollars a year. Then Tracy has taken that and run some, um, I guess it came out to be twenty-year bond funding from Southwest, who the town has used before, and I just received this this afternoon and I'm trying to figure it out.
This is great.
So...
You've done a lot of work.
Really pushes in the right direction.
How'd you get this? I thought you just started this.
This, well, we are lucky, the Municipal Building Committee rehashed and dropped...
And got your old...
Got that and we've vetted that and what I've said to the selectmen is, "Don't swallow this all at once. You need to, we all need to agree on a program. We need to go to the program spaces and the way I look at it is I've taken the program out of here, put it here, and I've asked the police department to review this and make in a statement that this is what they need." I've also recent...
Cassidy, the space required, yeah?
Yes, they need every single one of these spaces and they could possibly save a hundred feet in a storage closet or this is really actually insufficient because as soon as we build this in two years, uh, we think we'll be outdated by three hundred square feet because of X, Y, Z. And I need a letter from the police chief stating that he's accepting these numbers. So, I've asked him to do that. I've also just, um, as I flip through all this...
Well, Tracy as well, right? I mean, in terms of Town Hall.
Yes, yes, and I...
Town Hall's got to decide, these are the spaces that we need.
I said to the committee, the, um, the Municipal Building Committee is, and the reason the name, we decided on the name is that the town has facility issues that will keep coming. I don't plan to keep being on this for, for, after this as perpetuity, as, as the position, but the town needs to see this, that the town facilities need improvement and there always will be some town improvement facilities. And the last thing I want to see is a DPW rerun for the police station. And if the scenario of, um, putting a, um, I know I'm at the loss of the word for the minute, but, um, de, condemning the police station for all its inefficiencies, where are we going to put the police station on the street? I mean, that's what we did to the DPW. Is that where we're going with this? Is that we have to put a sticker on the door and move them out before anybody's going to take any action? It's going to affect the public safety. Are we going to have a fire truck or a police truck be like the DPW truck that lost an axle in the middle of the road? I can't imagine the scenario if somehow the police department cannot get out to a situation and something catastrophic happens because the, the town and the citizens couldn't come together and agree that the facilities are so woefully deficient. So, I think we're past the point of, of, you know, you, you just can't go down there and debate that, "Well, maybe we could put some paint on this or if we bought you a new cell door..."
You're not going to get that from me or from people that are familiar with the police department.
Okay.
We're, we're well aware of it.
So, we need to get everybody that's connected to understand where we're trying to go with this and where it comes down to a site selection because there are a lot of people who are opinionated as to where Town Hall should be and I guess that's a good, a good item. You know, we have three communities in one town, we have locations, we have, we have the benefit of, of history that a lot of towns in Massachusetts and across the country don't have and we need to focus on that. And there's something about the police station and the Town Hall that should be done right so that when people drive by and when people come into the Town Hall, there's a sense of, of community. This is, everyone belongs to this, so they, they should feel like they belong to it. They should feel excited about it, they should feel proud about it, they should feel proud when my parents come to visit and they go, "Oh, wow, that's, you guys got a nice Town Hall." So, let's not do this half-assed and let's not put a Band-Aid on it and let's figure out how to make something and we should be able to build something now that lasts fifty years if we really focus on it and commit to it.
Is this vote, um, let's assume we have a vote, uh, for a bond issue, is it a two-thirds majority or is it a fifty percent?
I'm not sure, actually, what the, what, what it needs to be.
Shouldn't be two-thirds.
I mean, two-thirds is for zoning, I think everything else is a simple majority.
Well, it's like raising ta, two and a half allows you to raise taxes, that fifty percent vote, doesn't it? Prop two and a half.
Well, two and a half is automatic.
Yeah, but the provisions, the provisions to, to exceed two and a half.
The override.
The override.
That's an override.
The override is fifty percent, right? So, it seems the logic, anyway.
So, with, with that thought, there is some timing in terms of where we are today with the town in that a tax rate of eleven dollars and thirty-two cents today with retiring debt that's coming off the town books could create a drop and I don't have the exact chart, but I hope to have some chart to say that maybe it goes down to nine dollars. I'm sure everybody in town would love that and they'd run around, but, you know, Amesbury's at twenty-one dollars. So, if we're at eleven, we go down to nine and we're increasing it by eight million dollars versus what I ran is like, uh, four point eight percent. You know, it's not, and then you could do the difference and you could say, you know, the hit is actually two point six percent. You're paying a little bit more than what Proposition Two and a Half would allow. Now, I know that there are other things in town that will eat up Proposition Two and a Half, but it's not like this is an arm breaker, it's not like this is the Taj Mahal, it's not like the police are asking for bowling lanes, that someone's asking for a ton. This is what it costs to build a simple facility and that's the message that needs to, to get out there. And, yeah, so, my number is for, like I said, four point eight percent increase to the current tax rate and if you take two and a half percent out of that, you're, you're really asking for a little bit more than two and a half percent in terms of an overall increase to people's taxes for a facility that is desperately needed. So, the site issues, you know, there was, the library was on and it seemed like in the last Public Safety Complex Committee, and Martha, you can say if I'm saying this right, but the real focus was figuring out whether Fire Company Number Two, being a private company, was going to go and negotiate with the town and sell their property and change their status. And there's one thing I learned, that almost everybody in town is connected to the fire department in some way. And the two fire companies, although they operate and they do a good job in town, there are some issues of just how they were created in the forties and what they're doing today and how they operate. You know, we're kicking in to buy a new fire truck for a private company, so, that didn't go. And the, we never focused on the site issue, so it never got to a level of, of confirming a program or confirming a budget or confirming a site selection. So, somebody said, "Okay, the public library." Well, if you do the public library, you have to be, give back the grant you got to build the library. So, that's a non-starter. Mantar Field. You could put it out on Mantar Field, but it's over on that side of, uh, town and it is a field that then, uh, I think had money appropriated for recreation and there are some synergies about having a police station next to kids playing, but it's not as efficiently located as it could be. The town forest is next to the transfer station, it's got some perk issues supposedly, it is in the dead center of town. If you look at town and you just do a simple target, you know, the transfer station right over there is about the same. The police department will tell you again and again that they're a transient facility that most of the time, they're out in cruisers and they're out and about anyway, but I think people would like to see the, not see the police station lost in a forest somewhere where they don't really know where it is. You're supposed to be able to find the police station if you have an issue and the presence of a police station, of people driving through town that think, "Oh, they don't have a police station." You know, all that perception, all those little things add up and, and that, that's where the planning board with, with your thoughts about town and, and the future could be very helpful with some pointed statements about, you know, where the best value for the town, not in money, not in location of operation of fire department, but in the presence of town where the police station could or should be.
I take it you're looking for at least a minimum station that could be accredited, is that correct?
Yes, there's state accredit, there's accreditation and certification and I've just recently got my hands on one oh five CMR four seventy, which is the state, uh, maintenance and construction of lockup facilities, which is the code, which talks about the minimums there. I'm still looking to figure out and call and find someone to talk to me from the Department of Public Safety's about who reviews the plans and who kind of blesses the plans and what the minimum criteria is so we can weigh what we're proposing versus, you know, this is the minimum, folks. And then, one of the other steps that we would like to do is find some towns that have recently done this and present those as precedents. Here's Rowley, they just built one, it's ten square feet off, it's, it only cost six million dollars, but it was built four years ago, so if you escalate it up and their population is equal or less to ours. And come up with at least a couple of those so other people can see something that they can say, "Oh, well, they did it and they did it and they did it." I guess this isn't too out of the...
So, when you say the eight million dollar, uh, cost estimate is, is, is a, um, do you know the difference between the police portion and the Town Hall portion?
I do, it's all on my sheet, but I'm not willing to publish that just yet. The police department, um, the Finance Committee back in May of two thousand twelve, this is December, but it was Bob Connor's report, um, it's, it's an excellent report, it's even more in-depth in some ways than this report, um, but he had a three and a half million budget just to renovate the police department downstairs. And that still wasn't getting them everything they needed at that time.
So, for those of you who are not looking at this, is, um, roughly a two to one ratio for option four and...
Right. And I, I myself can understand issues at Town Hall, but I don't know how that's perceived about need, about, you know, the place was beautified and painted and cleaned up a bit and there is something about Town Hall that people have been driving by it forever that that there's some, probably some stigmatisms about touching this.
No, he said he didn't want to pub, he didn't want to be in the number shift.
He doesn't want to help.
Yeah, I wouldn't care. I think that the one...
This will be issued shortly.
I think the one important thing about the police station is, is it's a health and safety issue right now, which, it's not just about space, it's health. They, isn't there issues with like the septic backing up and...
Yeah, we, we have since, and there are numbers that, um, and the police department Yeah, we, we have since, and there are numbers that, and the Police Department has been extremely accommodating since 2004, almost bent over backwards, and the people that work downstairs, anybody that should say that they shouldn't get it should go sit down there for four hours and just see what sitting in that space downstairs is like and say, this is what they work in, and these people are supposed to come out and save me? I mean, you'd be bored out of your gourd or thinking of anything else but sitting down there. Yeah, they have sewer flies that come up, they have the septic that backs up.
They've got snakes in the printers and.
Yeah, and it's.
So, so for those of you who have lived here longer than we have, why hasn't this passed in, until now? Why has this been either defeated or not come forward?
I would say there was a lot of interest. When were we messing around with the Woodbridge?
That was back in 2004 to 2006.
What, 2004? Not that early?
Woodbridge was one of the other sites mentioned, and a donated piece of property by the Governor's Academy on Route One was mentioned, and a study was done for the Woodbridge School, and it was a costing. And it, it's not the most.
I'm sure Dolores Person can attest to that.
Friendly, accessible, friendly structure to make re-accessible. I mean, there is a structure.
You've constructed much.
Needed a lot of work.
Right. So, it'd be a lot of work. I actually don't have that report. I haven't written that report, but that, that ship is.
It's off the table now.
Sail.
Right. We were looking at that for Town Hall, not for the police. Town Hall was going to move over there, and the police were going to move the administrative offices.
So, what do you need from us and when?
Well, I'd like you to read the report, and any comments you have are, are welcome. I'd like you to be aware of the issue and.
Would you like, if we, if we are able to do it, as a board, come together and give you a recommendation?
I'd like a recommendation, yes. I'd like a, a letter of recommendation that I can take to the Selectmen and say that I've talked to the Planning Board. The Planning Board has a recommendation to help the Municipal Building Committee help you Selectmen do what you need to do. I'm helping the Selectmen.
I think that would be a good thing.
I think that might be a good thing.
No problem at all doing that.
And the Selectmen have.
Need a little subcommittee to work on this? What do you think? You worked on this. Do you have time to do something on this? You, you.
What did I work? Martha worked on it. John worked on it.
I thought you worked on it with you and the Capital Planning Group.
I think this is one of those things, though, that we're all going to have to read it, and we're all going to have to be very aware with it and come to the table and.
Yeah.
Do it. I don't think you can go up in a subcommittee on this one.
I don't, I'm, I don't think do it yet, but I'm just thinking that, I, I don't see how it comes together easily, but let's try.
Is there backup from the master plan or anything that the Planning Board has published in the past that helps give guidance to other people in town about?
I think one of the issues in the past has been, at least from my perspective, is, is how much of the bad do you want the public really to know?
Well, so we.
Do you understand, then, that's always been like what has been released by the town?
Right. So, we haven't, the Municipal, the Public Safety Complex Committee didn't get that far, but Sam has said, you know, if things happen again and they happen worse than last time, you know, I am that close to putting a sticker on the front door. I'm close. It, it is that bad. And I've asked Officer Deputy Chief Lucy to say, you know, it's, I understand these are delicate. If he goes and starts saying what he really feels and thinks, he's got a liability issue for.
That's what I.
Employees are working down there. But how long are we going to keep quiet about chasing our tails, about being cautious about saying something that should be said in order to the need to fix it?
But the thing is, is those things are laid out on the table. I think people really get the gist of like how bad it is.
Yes.
I'm not saying you should. I'm not even saying that I know all the details.
I've offered a video tour. I've offered tours every time for the Selectmen meeting. I turn to the crowd and hopefully ask anybody if they want to take a tour. I think, you know, we're going to come up with some flyers, and we're going to post them everywhere we can that just says, hey, this is your public safety issue. We're going to put copies of the report here in Town Hall, over at the library. Like I said, the Capital Planning Committee, the Finance Committee will all be personally presented, and I plan to talk to each Selectman one-on-one to, to, to force that issue, to, to present, you know, the real issues and say that there's, there is a lot of, not couching, I guess, you know, this has been handled delicately before because these are tough issues, and now the, the tough issues need to come to light because they need to be solved, and we can't just keep pushing this off because they're only getting worse. We keep training, we keep training everybody else's staff because we have openings and the staff stays here. They can't get a job somewhere else. The service people come here, they do a good job, but there's extra money and extra effort in training those, those younger officers. And then if there's a better job in a better town with a better facility, why wouldn't you go?
Yeah.
And so, we have a much higher turnover rate than a lot of other towns. And the best thing we can have for public safety is to have officers with longevity that understand the town and know the community by being here and meeting and understanding who we are and what we do.
So, when do you want us to give you this letter by?
Well.
Deep down, that's where you get it.
So, the Board of Selectmen meet Tuesday.
Right.
And then the following Board of Selectmen meeting would be helpful.
Oh, that would might do.
That will be, I think, the ninth. That'll be.
Or.
The, the ninth of September.
Or the next one, before the end of September.
Okay.
All right.
That will give us a time to meet by the, a month from today.
I've talked to you. I'm telling them I talked to you. I'm telling them you guys are thinking on this, and they would appreciate something from you. You know, I don't know exactly what will be rolled out at the annual Town Meeting as to where we are, but it would be nice to say that Municipal Building Committee.
I think you should show them the, show them the video and scare the hell out of them.
So, John, the board, do you think that we can, he could probably decide this by an.
It would too. That's total.
I think you, I think you should do it.
It's awful.
Absolutely do it.
But that's not what we need to decide right now. We need to decide right now when we're going to finish this, make our decision to the letter.
I think that what I just heard was the Selectmen meet on the ninth, and then what's their next meeting?
The 23rd.
So, we have to have something by the 17th?
So, the 17th will finalize something for you.
Great.
Okay.
Eric, just as an aside, the Town Forest thing that you asked me about.
Yes.
Parking lot, chatting with Debbie, she did suggest that although it could conceivably be expensive or maybe even impossible, just getting a bigger machine out there, because what we did is with the town equipment, which will only go so far, but get something huge out there, a big excavator, and just go down and keep going until we, maybe we find something that's perkable. Then the, fill the hole, design it so the hole gets filled back in with leaching sand. That is a possibility.
And I guess also with the concept that the, the four options are, well, they're, they're somewhat site-specific, they're some, they're program-specific, but they're, they're still generic. You know, really, if we had some better thought of, of put this aside and just saying, where should the Police Department be? What's the best location in town for the benefit of the town and that value that I said before for noticeably and, and community center be? And if, I think if we had that, that's a good piece to helping decide the site, and then obviously, once the costs, which look a little bit equal, if, if they, if more thought gets put to them and they start to change, then, then, you know, there'll be an interest. Some people will work this solely from what's the cost backwards. Other people will say, where's it going to go? I don't care what the cost is. And other people are going to try to swallow this thing whole and get confused because there's just too many variables, and they're not going to.
What do the police say as far as their brothers go? Where would they like to be?
They could be right.
Few years ago, it was anywhere on Route One.
Anywhere?
Any, well, virtually anywhere, yeah. They were happy with Governor Dummer.
Yes, from, from Governors, somewhere between the Governor's site and Town Hall right here, I think would.
Yeah.
They'd like.
They'd like. I think they don't want to be on Plum Island. I don't think they want to be in Byfield and.
Right.
Shouldn't be.
Central West.
Right. So, Martha, would you just put on the agenda for the next meeting in early September that we should have had this read for a discussion about our individual and collective thoughts about, about this? Okay.
Thank you, Eric. It's a lot of work.
Thanks a lot, Eric. It's good to see you.
Getting there.
Yeah. Well, it is a lot of work, and.
Huge amount of work.
In a very short, when did you really, I mean, that thing, the other one was KO'd when?
This is since.
Five months?
Since March, but I think our real effort in rehashing the report comes in, you know, what we're, what we're planning to do. I mean, there's, there's a lot of public outreach in terms of, you know, getting anybody and everybody involved. So, so part of it is maybe the Municipal Building Committee has to put together a public awareness strategy report that we can share with people that are familiar with the town.
Absolutely.
And, you know, we plan to go talk to the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts. We talk, talk to the PTA people, I know, somebody, but that doesn't mean I know other people. You know, who's the biggest loudmouth in town that, that talks to people? It's got to get out to.
You have to go to the negative people who automatically don't want to have.
Well, how do you find them and identify them? This is where I'm a rookie and have no idea. I mean, I.
The Selectmen know who they are.
Well, it's related to the override issue of those folks because many people think.
So, the Selectmen know, know who they are?
Many people think nothing happens in town. It's a nice, safe town, and we don't need a Police Department as, as big as it is, or a new facility, and that's very hard to overcome. Somehow, they do have to be shown what's going on.
Yes, and I did have at the last previous Selectmen meeting some statistic, which I don't have memorized, which I probably should, that said there were 260 incidences, and so that's one incident every so many days, and they don't happen, they're not all nice and happening at the same time, and so if you were to group those, you could probably assume that they have, you know, six to eight incidences on the weekends, and most of those hot times are in the evening, and that's exactly when somebody can't be held. And if there are eight incidences that happen on an average around an evening, eight to midnight slot, and officers are busy driving somebody somewhere else, you know, we're losing officers at peak time because of the number of incidences that happen.
It's always an issue that I think folks would look at an issue like to say, just look at your, not my problem. So, you have to make it their problem. Not easy.
Right.
But that's what you do.
And nobody wants to hear the what-if, but if the what-if was to happen, it's the worst possible scenario, and nobody wants to take that and use that as the leverage to make people understand it. It's not, it's not the DPW where you can say, okay, you know, possibly you lost money and the tax rate went up and, and it was, it was your problem. That way, we're talking real people and lives and things that could happen here.
Well, it's.
It's an order of magnitude more expect, more serious than the DPW.
Yes.
And that was, by God, bad enough. That was pretty dreadful.
Right. And, and, you know, an officer could, I don't know, could slip, and in the tight confines of the spaces that we have with the extra boxes and printers and things and aisles and storage, you know, could hurt themselves, and there's a liability that nobody expected that could be, you know, quite a hit for, for putting us in the wrong direction.
Well, just the location of the officer on the desk out there, just, I mean, so vulnerable.
Yeah.
To a whack-off.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming by.
Dry run, and I think your letter or input and some guidance will go over, will go a long way to helping the Municipal Building Committee.
Good.
Get some leverage.
Hopefully, it does. We hope it does.
Anything to add, Martha?
You covered it all.
No, well done. Thanks.
Thanks.
All righty.
See you in the morning.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
See you in the morning.
There's the bane of this committee.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. Good night, everybody. Good night. Wrong one. So, let's, it is interesting. Those are three interesting issues before us tonight. So, we, Kathy, just want to give a cryptic bit of information. We think we may have someone who might have an interest in the Open Planning Board or Associate Member position.
Well, she's, I didn't really want to talk about it until she said that she was definitely.
Right. And I'd just say that we may have somebody. That's all.
So, I know of someone who may be interested. She's just clearing it with her work first. I don't want to divulge who she is just because she hasn't said yes.
Right.
But she said she gave us a answer in about a week and a half.
So, that'd be good. So, hopefully, she can work out. Discussion of Planning Board priorities for fiscal year 15 on sea level rise. John, do you have any?
Yeah, we've got the beginnings of a study group. Unofficial, not appointed by town officials, no money, no authority, but just an interest in the subject. So far, it's Joe, Jeff, myself, and Doug with plans to expand it.
Joe?
Joe Story.
Joe Story?
Yep. Lots of reasons why Joe Story would be an excellent member, in my humble opinion. He's got a tremendous experience with the ocean side of sea level rise and knows just about anybody, everybody in the state that has anything to do with that.
Is this a new committee?
It's a, it's a study group. It's not a committee, as I just said. It's not appointed by the town. We just appointed ourselves, and we, we want to study it, and the town is welcome to anything that we can produce.
And, and Jeff Walker?
Jeff Walker, yeah.
But Jeff isn't doing this as an official capacity of the Board of Selectmen?
I think he's doing it as somebody that really loves the great marsh and is scared to death about what his future is, not as a Board of Selectmen.
It gives it more teeth, though, if he does.
Pardon?
It gives it more teeth if he does it as Board of Selectmen.
Oh, yeah, certainly. Certainly. That is not necessarily a bad thing by any means, but anyway, that's where it is at this point.
So, so you.
Just getting, just getting organized.
So, you had a discussion with Tracy?
Yeah.
And what is Tracy's thought?
She was fine with it.
This is a committee in your.
Jeff, Jeff was fine with it. Pardon me?
Is this like a subcommittee of the Stormwater or?
No, 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 no. It's nothing to do with Stormwater. It's, first of, Stormwater, Stormwater, not a part of the town, they just volunteer. Stormwater is an official town committee appointed by the Selectmen. This is a study group of town citizens who are interested in the subject.
Why not make it a subcommittee of the Stormwater?
Well, I don't think that.
It might be.
I don't, I don't see that as the appropriate thing, no. I mean, the Stormwater and sea level rise are definitely related, I agree, but first of all, I think the Stormwater Committee has enough to do, especially if in the near future the, the new permit kicks in. We have quite enough to do without having to deal with something as important as sea level rise.
I just meant that if it was like a subcommittee of an existing committee, then I just meant that if it was like a subcommittee of an existing committee, then it kind of isn't like, I don't know. I'd never heard of an independent committee before.
Well, it could be, it could be a committee of its own, all by itself. It could be appointed, but, you know.
See, I guess my image of what, what this was gonna do was that Tracy, as town administrator, would, you know, select X number, five, eight, seven, whatever, people who she wanted to move forward and develop a town position and develop a, whatever it is, strategy to deal with, to sea level. And so that would, that makes sense.
Yeah.
So I don't, but you didn't want to do that, or?
Well, I, I had asked her, it was, it was a suggestion of somebody else that it just be a group for openers, all right? And I'm not really willing to go into a huge amount of detail on that. So common sense says you check with the two major power structures in town, which is Tracy and Jeff, okay?
The Board of Selectment, I mean.
They were both, they were both cool with it. Well, I'm not gonna check with all the selectmen. I just checked with Jeff, and Joe had already talked to him.
No, Jeff has, can't say. He, Jeff represents the Board of Selectmen, just like John. You can ask John something, but he can't.
Okay, if a study group is dealing with things that are, the town has a stake in, it seems to me only sensible before a private group forms to say, hey, Ms. Town Administrator, do you see a problem with this? Mr. Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, do you see a problem? They didn't see a problem.
I think that, I think it's great that you're having a committee. I'm not against a committee.
Yeah, okay.
I just wish it was more structured where it was more of a formal committee, so that it was like, you're gonna have, okay, what is the intent of the committee, and it's overseen by Tracy or whatnot. Do you understand, John? How do I articulate that?
These, these things are all gonna flow.
You just articulated it. That's exactly the way I feel. Is that?
Well, first of all, the, the number one task which we're working on right now, Doug and I are at each other's throats on it, as a matter of fact, is what are we trying to do? What's, what's the mission? What are we, what are we trying to accomplish? Which we will publish, obviously, okay? We're not doing this in, in a vacuum. We're gonna let everybody in, in town government know what our thinking is on it, get feedback, modify it in some fashion. We've basically agreed, for those of us that are the core of this, agreed to agree, okay? We're not gonna be taking votes. We're gonna be trying to get a consensus and deal with a consensus rather than, you know, formal votes. We also, I think, I mean, I'm speaking in terms of my own thoughts, and these are not, we've had like one meeting, which was Joe and I. Doug had the wrong date and he didn't show up, okay? But start with a, a statement of what we're up to. Secondly, start working on some generalities to feed the planning board for their consideration as part of the general plan update. Now, the details of where we're going from there are way beyond the detailed level that I'm seeing in the general plan. The general plan is very, very, very broad. And I think we probably know enough about sea level rise right now to write it. Probably write it with first thing up in the morning, you know, it's not, it's not that hard. There are very obvious things that we need to say. And there will be a consultant working on the general plan and.
What is the general plan? What document is that?
The general plan that we're going to update. Are we not, isn't that our goal?
First of all, don't get sneaky. I'm trying to figure out, you said a general plan. I didn't know if you meant the master plan or something.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm using terminology from a past life. Master plan. I'm sorry. Master plan.
Right.
Okay? In other communities, in other venues, it's called the general plan, but it, master plan, yes.
So, I don't know how to respond to this, to be honest. I, I, I would love to see an official group. And maybe that's what Tracy wants, to see if this has some life or something like that. And if it has life, then, but that would be my, I mean, that you wanna have everyone in the town involved in an official capacity looking at the issue of sea level rise and what is, what its impacts will be on infrastructure in the town. I mean, that, that's.
Sure. Sure.
I mean, I, so I get.
And, and the fact that somebody isn't on the committee does not mean they're not involved. The way the stormwater committee has kind of evolved, and a lot of it has to do with the fact that we don't have the new permit yet. But we, we meet like once a year, just to say we did. Yvonne and I are doing probably most of the work. Martha and Doug are next in doing, in, in being involved. And we don't do much of anything with making sure, without making sure that Martha and Doug are on board with it. We use them as, as a sounding board and a reality check. Tracy is on the committee, but she's basically just kept informed as far as what we're up to. But Tim is involved whenever there's something to do with him. We don't burden him with going to meetings, but we do, he's into, he's into anything that has anything to do with him. The same thing applies to Debbie. Anything that has to do with septic systems. So, well, I, I, this is, I'm just presenting this as where we are, John. You're welcome to talk to Tracy and talk to anybody and.
I would just like to, I would just like to see it become official.
I think it's the kind of thing that is a group of willing volunteers coming together, which will probably evolve, if it's worthwhile, into a more formal town-related committee. And that's what Tracy's looking for, I would imagine.
No, let's see.
It'll take some time.
Well, there'll be people that we've been talking about bringing in that are not town officials, but do have some knowledge of the subject.
Well, I would, I would imagine these people, I mean, there are all those people that came to Storm Search. I mean, there's a lot of expertise.
Yeah, and, and some that could have spoken to Storm Search, as a matter of fact. But anyway, that's, that's where we are with that at this point.
Okay.
And we're trying to figure out what our mission is, and that's what we're, that's what we are working on at the moment. And you'll be the first to know when we figure it out ourselves.
Well, I, I, I think I would like to know as you move along, as, I'm sure Tracy would like to know too, but.
Of course.
Do you have any other comments on this?
No.
No, no, no. Martha?
No, I think, just eventually, I think it would be good to have some of our hazard mitigation team get involved.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
The chief and deputy chief and the fire chief and so on and so forth.
Oh, yeah, that, that goes without saying that the public safety aspect of this is, is a super large component. Again, getting the police chief and the fire chief to a meeting every couple of weeks may not be the easiest thing in the world.
Right, right.
But that doesn't mean you don't deal with them.
So, so just a comment I, I've got on this is that I did talk to Coastal Zone Management, and CZM partially funded those studies in Marshfield, Duxbury, and Situate.
Right.
And they are having a second round of funding this fall. And the kinds of things, so it would be maybe interesting for you all to take a look at what are the kinds of studies that they want to study and see if that's the direction that you want to take the group in. One of the things, for example, that they, that they funded in, or that, if you, if you look at the goals and objectives of those, of the studies that were done for Duxbury, it was to identify various levels, you know, of sea level rise and its inundation on infrastructure throughout the town. And then to develop strategies in terms of funding and policies and laws to deal with it. I mean, that's about as simple as you can get. But they got fifty thousand dollars, and they gave, the last go around, they gave about a million dollars. Most of which, I mean, two hundred thousand went to Boston, but like forty-four thousand went to Brewster and places like that on the Cape, so. And they thought it was very successful, and I think they think their next round is, they'll announce it sometime in September. So I've been in contact with her, and she's gonna give me some information about.
Okay.
About what, and, and if you've got something to shoot for, that you can either decide that you wanna go after something like that or you don't.
Yeah.
You know, but it could, it could be a, you know, money can always be a great mobilizer of objectives. And it can make you focus on what makes sense. So let me know how that's going, and we'll see if we can fit together the CZM stuff.
Well, one way of looking at funding right now for something for fall is that we probably ought to know enough about it ourselves before we start going after money for consulting help. I think we're quite a ways away. There's just an awful lot we can do for ourselves in terms of figuring out what our vulnerabilities are and what our possible remedies to those vulnerabilities are without spending a dime. And then at that point, I think we're gonna be a lot sharper at what kind of consulting help we need. I think on the short term, we probably can get what we need from the master plan consultant, whoever they may be, for the master plan, which is, you know, pretty general, quite general. I don't think we need to do anything for the generalities in terms of help. When we get into the, you know, widening bridges, looking at waterways and so forth, now we're into serious, heavy-duty engineering consulting needs. There's no way in the world we're gonna do that ourselves.
Yeah, I wasn't too sure, I mean, we'll have to see whether sea level rise is really an integral part of the major funding for the master plan. I guess we'd always thought that you would mention it as part of the master plan as something that hadn't been talked about, but would be a separate issue.
Well, I think you're talking two things. I thought that we want, we would want to mention it the way stormwater was mentioned. No details, just we gotta get serious about it. We gotta do this, 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 and this. And that's how I would see the sea level rise thing. We wanna do this, this, and this.
Use the master plan as a kick in the pants to the process.
Exactly, just something that, so it's on record. It's a placeholder.
Okay, subdivision rules and regs. How we doing?
I've gone through all the sections. I have one that I want to finish off, and then the forms. I've checked it against Mass General Law. I have a question for Ginny on one item, having to do with timeframe. But I'd like to sit down with you sometime soon.
Yeah.
To, to kind of go through it.
Next week is looking pretty good, so.
Towards the end of next week.
Let me know when you wanna do it.
Let's try to do this, only because I go back to the minutes, and it did indicate that we would have it by this meeting.
Right, right.
And so let's really have it by the next meeting, okay? Route one, so we, we kept this off, Kathleen, on the Route 1A lower green overlay?
The way we left it off last time was is that we all talked about maybe reducing the proposed district to just the lower green to the river. And then there was questions of whether or not that was desired by the property owners, because I think there was only like eight people involved, eight property owners. So I was wondering, at this point, do we want to contact them to find out if they're interested in such a district?
George, what do you think?
I think holding it off from now would be a good idea.
Holding what?
So don't work on it, no?
Well, not for, not at this point.
That's fine.
George suggested we hold off on it for a while.
So be table it till we did finish some of our other items, agenda items.
Yep.
Martha?
I think that's fine. It's probably not one of the highest priorities.
Yeah, okay, so why don't we just say we want to revisit this in October, after, after the Fall Town meeting? Is that okay?
Just so you know, normally, if we're gonna have anything for the spring meeting, March, Wednesday is usually a cutoff for, for our public hearing. You have to have things done by end of January.
The draft needs to be pretty well finalized by then so that we can start going through the process.
Okay.
So then the October, November, December.
Signs. Mr. Morse?
I reviewed the sign regulations again, and there's really nothing that has to be changed. Martha and I talked briefly, and if the overlay district becomes reality, there would have to be a change then. As far as talking with interested parties, I've talked with a couple so far. I've had family visiting for a few days, so that's been slowed up, and I will.
Funny how that can happen.
I, you know, you went through the same thing.
Still doing it.
So I will let you know. There's, there's some progress, but nothing reportable at this point.
Okay, affordable housing. I don't think we've got much on this, do we? Martha?
Not right, not, not right now.
Although we did take a look at the affordable housing plan and the ordinance that was passed by West Newbury, which is interesting, because they, I mean, it's a much smaller town than we are, and they've got a inclusionary housing provision in their plan. And I think it, I think as we get into the master plan, I think that it may be something we want to be taking a look at. There's not a huge amount of support for this in the town, but I think that we need to look like we're making progress and maybe get something done. Master plan update, we sent, Martha sent out this note. Did you all get a copy of what she sent out, which is the?
Outline?
The outline. That's basically a summary of what we talked to Marshall and Frank Remley about. And so what we'd like to do is get your concurrence with, with these, are these such opaque ones?
But this is the work.
Oh, it's one, I see, it's double-sided.
So if it's not mentioned, it's, then what does that mean?
Just, we haven't thought of it yet. This is not a final product. This is, however, what we came up with. And so if you want things added to this or subtracted from this, because what we, our next step was to do this. First of all, we've reviewed, not this list, but we've told Tracy that we met with Frank and, and Marshall, that it was a very positive meeting, and that we would get them this document or something like that to say, here's something for you guys to take a look at. What would you like to add to this that we don't have in here? So this, this is our first attempt at this, and we wanted to get your input on it before we sent the letter out.
One item I saw, John, that mentioned infrastructure. I think that really has to be emphasized, probably with subsets under that of water, sewer possibly at some areas of the town, and roads.
Okay, we're.
And of those, what's the most important?
F, community facilities and services? Yeah, update infrastructure.
Yep.
Yeah, I think, well, you're referencing the document that already exists, so maybe you might want to just put that subset in there, okay?
Thanks.
Anything else, George?
No, that's not right now.
Kathleen?
No. One of the things I, I don't know if I really wanna put it in the letter, but one of the things the town does need to address is management of our recreation areas.
You, you mean like this stuff out here?
Like the baseball fields, the football fields and all. Right now, it's kind of in chaos, just so you know, so. I don't expect us to get a recreation director, but it's one of those things where we may want to consider including it in the master plan.
Okay.
But it's definitely not on a high priority list compared to a police station. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, police stations out there.
Well, it's also something that could go in the update of the open space plan, open space and recreation plan.
Right. Like, I've always wanted, well, I can't get a lot of movement on this. I wanted to improve the sidewalk going from the lower green to the upper green, because I think it's a mess.
Yeah.
You know, and I think that'd be nice, because a couple of times. Because a couple of times I almost hit people as they're, because they're always jogging or running right in the middle, like on the middle, but on the side of the road, because they veer off. And if you had a improved sidewalk, they might walk on the sidewalk instead of.
Yeah, they walk and, they run on the street up here, and there's a sidewalk up here.
Yeah.
Of course, it's a pretty bad sidewalk.
That's what I'm saying, if we.
Pretty dangerous.
So we, Martha and I had talked and said, well, maybe we get DOT money for that, because it is a state highway.
There's been a number of people that have wished that and asked, not residents, not.
Anyway, that's my little thing, you know, as well as cleaning up Plum Island Center. Okay, John, do you have any thoughts on this?
Not really, no.
So we do have this in, see, identify new goals.
Sea level, okay, oh, you're talking about that one.
This is in the master plan.
Yeah, all right. Well, I've, I've sort of addressed where I think I am at the moment.
No, I got it.
You know?
So I'm just saying that we'll, we'll, what I'm saying is that this should be part of the master plan, and that would be part of.
Yeah, I think the broad generality should be part of the master plan. However, it needs something way, way, way beyond broad generalities.
Right.
Did you purposely skip that?
Oh, I did. Let me get back to that for a second, I'm sorry. Route one, I didn't purposely forget, skip it. Route one, commercial development? I, I, you know, I, I really think that we should do something about trying to put this issue to rest, whether or not we're capable of improving Route one in terms of improving the economic base and improving the tax rate, eradables that come from the projects out there. But when we made the walk through the Bashaw property, he was there. And Jeff asked him, where's your well? He says, oh, I, I know where the well is. And so we had this long talk about it, and it just seems to me that there's, I think, the potential of getting some kind of water there if, if we, if we really want to have that discussion. But I think this is up to the town administrator and the Board of Selectmen and, and people like that. We did have a discussion with the Dennis DeZoglio. DeZoglio about him bringing this issue up with Mayor Holliday, which he has done, but it has not borne any fruit at this point in time. So, you know, either we continue to have the kind of projects that were brought in here tonight, or we try to get decent development out there, and the only way to do it is through getting water out there. Kathleen did this major study. It would be a crime, I think, to let that just sit, sit back and not move forward on it. That's my position on it. What are your thoughts?
Well, it'd be wonderful to get water out there, but I think it's a political issue, so I'm not quite sure how it's handled.
Well, maybe, again, the, the master plan can kick it off, you know, kick it in the teeth and say, let's, let's get a group of people who are the property owners and the, what's it, what's, what's the water district called?
Old Town.
The Old Town Water District members, and.
It's defunct, though.
Is it completely defunct?
Well, they haven't had a proper meeting annually to vote up their board, so I'm not quite sure how that works.
Really?
They're not what you call active.
Yeah, so, so you get, in other words, everybody says that they want to do this, but no one does it. So, again, why not? And it, it does appear that you can tap water between that property and some other properties to get water down to Route one.
Is it too late, though, with the solar applications going in for that looking? I mean, that's the big property.
The well's not there.
Oh, the well is, no, the well is, well, he wouldn't say, but it was closer to the third, the last property we looked at. No, but that's our developable site.
Yes.
The, that's the area. I mean, that's, that's the most, but you could get it down on the other parts of Route one.
But so, even if you. But so, even if you had interest from Town Hall, right now, what sites would you be looking at developing? If you're getting a 20-year lease, possibly on the largest site in most, the prime site, would it be worth it at this point?
Yeah, it may not be. So, I would like to have this discussion, so we can put this to bed and decide, you know what, for 20 years, we're not going to get anything there, and we're just going to have to deal with what we've got. And, you know, then, then, our economic development strategy shifts. And we don't think about Route 1 as an area where we can do it. And I'm not sure if it's Pearson Plaza, but if they want to increase ratables, then it has, it has to do with West Newbury did. And that is they increased...
Property taxes?
No, they increased the appeal of the town to the homeowners. And they increased the value of homes being built. And they built a lot of over 55 communities. And it's just a whole different strategy. I mean, I think it's worth a discussion, but at least it should be part of the master plan process. So that, so that's my thought, is that you have this with people, with representatives from the building department and from the administrator, town administrator, and, and people from the community, and say, well, if we're not going to do this, then the reality is, this is the way Route 1 is going to be. We've been thinking about developing commercial there to help offset the burden to the property owner. We can't do it. But here's an option. You don't like that option, then it's a status quo, and you're just going to constantly erode what people want to pay. So I have a whole section in here about looking at the fiscal implications of all land use decisions.
Wow.
Which I think is important. So...
Whatever you do, Howard, you'll need to have the property owners participate.
Yeah, you can't do, that, that's why Kathleen's suggestion was right. Do we want to do something? If so, call them all in. We'll go meet with them and see if they have an interest in it. And the same thing is true with Route 1. I mean, they'll sit there and say, well, what do you want me to do? I don't have any water, I don't have any sewer. So...
So what are you initiating?
Nothing, no. It's, it's part of the, these, these items that were on this list for the agenda were simply priority items that people wanted to be included in the master plan, or, or, or work to be done for this year, one or the other. And so, I think we have in this document, well, envisioning community participation, it says, identify new goals, e.g., address issues related to sea level rise. Also, increase and broaden the tax base. That's what that is, okay? Okay, so I'm sorry that I skipped that. All right, any new business?
How about Coldwell Farm?
Oh, Coldwell Farm.
Skipping everything.
It's a slip of the finger.
We had a good meeting with Tracy. We have cost estimates to build a trail that probably need to be adjusted a little bit upwards based on, Doug's thought that it should be a larger parking area off of Cold, off of Elm, Elm Street. And Tracy was fine with it, and fine with the cost, except that she wasn't sure if she could get all of it in one year. And so, we have just scheduled a meeting with the board for Septen, that might be September 17th. Did I forward you those dates?
You did, and I can't remember what it was.
I think it might be September, anyway, it's mid-September. And to go over the plans that we have developed, that show alternate trails and alternate costs associated with that. So we'll see what happens. But the, and, what do you call them, the HOA board has changed. We have a new group that are there. And we'll see if they have an interest in doing it, maybe participating in the cost, which would be great.
Is there any sense that they might be willing to expand the easement by widening the trail to make it more attractive? I mean, a rustic trail is a really rustic trail.
Isn't that an deed that was a rustic trail?
It is, but it may be modifiable.
It, it could be. I think that at this point in time, it would be difficult to do that. Because I think that the rustic trail is what are in people's minds as, don't you agree?
Yeah, I do agree.
I think it would be difficult to do that. So, I mean, it's kind of, you know, we had two meetings with them, and, and we walked a trail in April and May or June. We worked on the costs over the summer, and so we just got back to them, and so we'll meet with them. Anything else on that, except for the fact that I, that I skipped it? Any new business?
I guess the only thing would be, now that the Woodbridge School is moving along, we did have provision in the special permit decision to have them come in from time to time and give us a progress report, and it might be a good time to, to do that.
Well, I think that what we wanted to do was just have you to talk about...
We can do that.
That, did you get a request from Dolores? Is that how this started?
No.
No?
No.
So I'm just thinking that you need to get back to her and have a discussion. And then, if you can resolve it without her coming before us, that's fine, between the two of you. But if you...
And they're kind of two, two, two separate issues, but anyway, George and I will...
Right, you'll figure that out and report to us, and if she has, have her come in?
But she means as far as back to the permit, not the issue that we talked about earlier, correct?
Right, right, right.
Right.
Right, right.
So, do, but we have the opportunity, you're saying, to, for her to give us feedback to the progress of the project?
Right, I mean, it was in the special, special permit decision for her to come back. And there were questions that were asked when the special permit was being, you know, discussed, like some of the site development and things like that. So if the board is interested in getting a progress report, I could ask her to come in.
Sure.
I think that's meaningful.
Sure.
Have you had any calls from the butters or neighbors with complaints or concerns?
The only comment that I've had recently is a couple of people voiced concern about the vinyl picket fence that went up.
Oh, in the front?
Yeah, in the front, the Graham Ave and the High Road side. They were a little disappointed to see that.
I think the front driver is lousy.
I'm so delighted to not have a nice building self-destructing. You know, I'm quite happy with the way it is.
You know, yeah, I think, I think you can carp with lots of pieces here and there, but the point is, I just wish you good luck, and I hope she sells them for the prices she wants to sell them for.
Lilian Two for an apartment? Are you kidding me?
Has anybody gone through?
I haven't. I just looked at the Coldwell Banker site.
Oh, okay, yeah, I went to the open house.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty nice inside.
It's, 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 they're interesting, you know, both the first floor. She, one of the kind of cool things with, they took the blackboards and used the backside of the slate for the fireplaces.
Oh, that is kind of cool. Well, no, I wish her luck. But on, on that issue, though, of the, of the bungalow, is she looking to start construction on that soon?
I don't know, I'd have to talk to Sam about that. I don't know if it's been promoted yet.
I think the building itself looks really nice.
Looks great.
Yeah.
And I like the parking lot. I was surprised, I thought there'd be a fence between the, whatever the next house is and that, but apparently they're not going to put a fence up.
Yeah, I thought they were going to, but that, you know, that, that's one of the reasons it might be interesting to have Dolores come in to...
I mean, they have worked, they may have negotiated that out with the, with the owners. I don't know. So that would be a very good question to ask. Any other questions on that, or, all right, do we have any, we know about the Concom, anything else?
You heard it all tonight. Nothing else of note happened.
CBA, well, Martha and I met with the new, what's his, Joe Cosgrove?
Right.
From MVPC, and he's taking, what's his name, McIntosh? Alan McIntosh's place. And it was a good meeting, and a nice guy. And he, in particular, was focusing on stormwater regs and on the hazard plan. So it was good. And I think that's it. So can I have a motion to adjourn?
To move.
To move, second.
Second, all those in favor.